Yes, it's at Squeal Dilla. Okay. Okay. Testing, testing, one, two, three. Testing, testing, one, two, three. Okay, can we also have the doors in the back closed because we don't want to hear City Council right now?
Okay, good afternoon. In accordance with the session forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this committee of adjustment of the city of Toronto is called to order. The committee of adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. My name is Yim Chen. I will chair this afternoon's hearing and I'd like to also introduce a panel member, Mr. Paul Gogan, Mr. Gary McCain, and also Mr. Sierra Bayett. And our Deputy Secretary of Treasury is Sabrina Salatino. And I also would like to acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anasabie, and the Chibwe, and the Huasunee, and the Wanda Peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis people. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty fourteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of adjustment or public hearing are now conducted in hybrid in-person and virtual form. Some applicants or participants will make their submission in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through webex. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and how register in advance will be connected with their tablet, computer, smartphone, or telephone, and have the options of participating via video or audio only. And all virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator one person at a time. We also ask you to mute your devices until your call to speak. And those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled, and you also, you will only be visible during your five-minute speaking time. At all, and all other times, your video will be disabled and you will be reinstated as attending. For both in-person and virtual participants, committee of adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through webex are not allowed to use shared screen or any other panelist's control during a video appearance. People, people attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of committee of adjustment on application must fill out a decision request card. And those participating virtually need to submit a written request or a decision by email. Please ensure you include your name, address, and email address, because the committee of adjustment and also the Toronto local appeal body, T-Lab, will be sending notifications and appeal update by email. If you do not agree with the decision of committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the planning act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal committees of judgment decision. Only the applicant, the minister or municipal affair and housing, special persons, and public bodies such as those terms or defined in the planning act are permitted to appeal the decision of the committee of adjustment. And the appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. And the following is the procedure that we will use for the hearing. When you, when the application is not contested, the agent or applicant may proceed with the presentation if he's desired. When a committee does not require a presentation, applicants are advised to chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions or take the matter into committee for decision. And each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. And I will comment when you're reaching the five minutes. Any presentations or materials that you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance, and staff and committee members cannot accept material at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clarify, state your name and address, and please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will be, will see first and then will make a presentation to committee on the application. And please note, the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee might decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure the revisions is accurate and that, and that all those entitled to notice are in form of the changes. Those individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we'll call the people in the room and then followed by the people participating through webex. And committee member may ask each speaker a question after they finish the presentation. And what, when all the speakers are finished, the applicant or agent have opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. And this will mark the end of the discussion, and the application will be then taken into committee for decision. At this point, I also like to know whether there's some declaration of conflict interest from panel members and staff.
No.
No? And we have no minutes to adopt, and there are deferral requests, and also there are some closed files?
Through you, Madam Chair, see no closed files and see no requests for deferral.
Okay, so we are ready for the first item in the afternoon is nineteen, number nineteen A, and fifty-two fifty-six Scarborough Beach Boulevard. And the purpose is to obtain as consent to sever the existing residential lot into two undersized residential lots, and also to create new easements right away and to maintain existing easements and right away. We are, also the, the purpose for the application is to maintain the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling containing two residential units with a front porch and a front second-story balcony, and also to remain, to maintain the rear one-story auxiliary building, which is a three-car garage. And the purpose for the application, which is the other part of the lot, is to maintain the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling containing two residential units with a front porch and a front second-story balcony. The committee have received a draft survey, a copy of the survey site plan for plant elevations, and cover letter, and also an upper's report from the agent. We also have received comment from community planning, transportation engineering, and we have received staff report from development engineering and also the urban forestry. And we receive opposition letters from fifty-four Scarborough Beach Boulevard, and also from, also from, there has come with no address, but Simon Rattricks from Scarborough Beach Boulevard. We are ready for the eight.
Through you, Madam Chair, we have the agent here in person to speak. Please come up to the podium.
Yes. You. So you are the agent. You, you do have a couple of positions. Can you get, give us your name and address to start with, please.
Through you, Madam Chair. My name is Brandon Stevens. I am the agent and representing the owner of the property. Our firm, Johnston Letavsky Planning Consultants, has been retained to act as the agent, as I said, and our office for the record is located at three twenty Bay Street here in Toronto.
Yeah, but are there other speakers?
Through you, Madam Chair. There's no other speakers here.
Yeah, but so the, let me check with the speaker? Yes. I want to speak, but.
We don't have any registered speakers.
Yeah, so in that case, let me check whether the panel require a presentation or?
Maybe like a very short summary.
Yeah, yeah, because it seems to be like.
Interesting, it's an interesting part.
Yeah, it's interesting project, and it's, you know, there are many parts to it. So before that, can you, do you want us to bring up some material before you start your presentation?
Just, I have a few slides. I will say I'll keep it very brief.
Yes.
I know we're running behind, so I'll keep my remarks brief. I'll start with the purpose of the application. As you said, Madam Chair, that the purpose is to sever the existing lot into two equal-sized lots. I would note that in addition to the consent application, there are accompanying minor variance applications, one for each proposed lot. And in my opinion, the application is technical in nature. There's no proposed construction as part of the application. And as such, there being no proposed construction, there's no change in the number of units. And in turn, there's no change in the demand on infrastructure as part of this proposal. So I think those are very important things to highlight at the beginning. I would also say that we've received numerous memorandums from staff, and we thank them for their support. Or should I say that there is no objections or concerns from staff? And, and we've worked very hard with staff collaboratively to get to that point. So we're very happy to report that there's no objections from city staff. Two, two last points that I'd highlight quickly is that because there are no physical changes, there's no construction proposed, the proposal will continue to be consistent with the neighborhood character of the area. And I point to page three of our letter for numerous examples of similar lot patterns in the surrounding area. Finally, to acknowledge the letters of objection and concern, they are from, there's three letters that have been filed. Two I would note are from the same unit, and as I said, there's four units. One of them has filed two letters of objection, and the third is an unaddressed letter from someone that lives on the street. We don't know where they live or how close they are. But I would say that in response to the concerns that have been raised in those letters of objection, I'd say first that the concerns about, about tenant issues, raising the rent potentially, rent evictions, things of that nature that were raised in those letters, there is no impact whatsoever by consent application or a minor variance application. Those applications do not override the tenants' rights and protections that are in place today, and there would be no change to those rights and protections that they have should you choose to approve these applications. So I want to make that very clear. In terms of the other concerns, frankly, they are not land use planning concerns, not to take anything away from them. But for example, there were concerns about whether the owner received the necessary permits for renovations that were conducted. The appropriate channels for that would be through Toronto Building, not through a committee of adjustment. Just like if there were concerns about snow being cleared or grass being cut, this committee is not the appropriate venue to address those concerns. That would go through MLS, for example. So again, I would say thank you to city staff for working with us to get to the point where there are no concerns or objections, and I'd leave it there. Happy to answer any questions.
That was really good presentation, actually. Clears a couple of my questions. I have one question that the, the report from development engineering asking for some conditions, since you're not doing any construction, so those conditions are good, you can seem to be separate the, this, the meter, the service meter and renumbering and that kind.
Yes, those are standard conditions, and we don't have concerns with those recommended conditions from ECS or from urban forestry as well.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, please.
Two questions. The first one, you may or may not need to answer, I'll leave it to you. What's the reason for the severance? I mean, there's no construction, no alterations. So any reason behind the severance?
It's just to provide the owner with flexibility in the future if they want to sell, just to have that, that option. But I would say that there's no intention at this point. I asked our client directly about that. There's no intention to sell in, in the near future.
And the second question is, the variances, because you're not doing anything to alter the structures at all, the variances that are under nineteen B and nineteen C, are they all just triggered because of the severance?
That's right.
Those existing conditions?
Correct. Through you, Madam Chair, all of the variances that are triggered are to recognize existing conditions. There is no physical change being proposed whatsoever.
Thank you, Mr. McCain.
Yes, please, yeah.
Yes, but just with respect to your variance relating to soft landscaping, I was concerned there, right? We should have fifty percent and the, and zero is being maintained as soft landscaping. Any chance of improving that? It would, would require some changes.
Unfortunately, we can't improve that existing condition at this point. But I just want to highlight that it is maintaining existing conditions that have been existing for many, many, many years.
Okay, and just protect the parking spaces and asking for three when two are to be there. I'll address that as well.
Again, I'd say that it's to legalize an existing condition. That garage with three parking spaces is there today, and it would be retained.
So that, that mean that you have to create right away for the, for them to get to the garage?
So there's a right of way already. There's easements in place, and they'd just be simply revised, and we've worked with city staff very carefully to make sure that we have the right proposed easements in place so that the fifty-four, the new proposed lot would have access as well as fifty-two.
Yeah, what I mean is the fifty-two, and the shepherd, fifty-two will have to have a new easement from fifty-four, right?
Yes, correct, yes.
So you're going to proceed with that?
Yes, that's part of our, our application, and that's set out in the draft, our plan. Is those necessary?
Application already.
Yes, it's part of the consent application.
That's good to know. Thank you. All right, any other questions? That's a good, yeah, I almost read that they have three garages there.
To clarify, if I may, one garage, three parking spaces.
Oh, okay.
Just rather, just to be.
All right, one structure.
One structure, yes.
Thank you. All right, any other questions?
None.
Okay, no, we don't have any more questions. Now we're in committee. Yes.
We'll kick off with this one. I think this is very straightforward, very technical. And I think when I read the covering letter, what immediately jumped out is that there are no construction issues at all. There's no alterations. It's merely a severance. And of course, the variances that we saw for both parts nineteen B and C, my concern was, you know, and I think was answered appropriately, that these existing conditions triggered by the severance.
Yeah.
So I don't see any problem to this particular application. I'm not sure if we can deal with nineteen B and nineteen C together, so it'll be one package.
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, you deal with all three applicants.
So at the moment, there are only two sets of conditions. One is forestry, number three, for parts A and B.
C.
And.
And C.
So S as well?
No, A and C.
A and C, thank you. And engineering condition that was mentioned earlier. I'd like to move approval without, with those conditions in mind.
Sorry, urban forestry. It's for the consent?
Yeah.
And then, yeah, and C, but we'll put it under the consent so they can clear off those conditions before certificates are issued.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, all right. So do we have a second? Mr. Gogan, second? All in favor of approval with the conditions? You're in emergency approval. Thank you for coming. Okay, item twenty is one eight one Poplar Plains Row. This is the consent, this is the consent to sever the property into two undersized residential lots. It's to create, also to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with a side staircase giving access to the rear yard, a front basement integral garage, and a front cover porch with stair, a front level rear deck with stairs, and front and rear first-story balconies. Also, a new front driveway will be constructed on the south side of the lot, abutting Poplar Plains. And the existing detached garage will be demolished. We, the, the purpose also to construct another new three-story detached dwelling including a basement extension with, with a side, a north side, neutral staircase, and a front basement integral garage, and a front cover porch with stair, and the first floor's rear deck with stair. And the front and rear third-story balcony, also a new front driveway will be constructed, abutting Poplar Plain. The existing detached garage will be demolished. And we receive a draft, our plan of survey, a copy of survey site plan for plant elevations. And we, we also have four, four plants and elevations from the agent, twelve photographs of the property and cover leather, and also presentation material from the agent. And we, we see email corresponding from community planning, the staff report from engineering, and, and also from urban forestry. And we receive advisory comment from urban forestry. We receive support in twenty-nine and thirty, thirty-one Admin Street. And we receive oppositions from one oh four and one oh eight Poplar Plains Row. Yes, that's all we receive, and we're ready for the agents.
Through you, Madam Chair. We have the agent online and one registered speaker. They're showing up as an interest. I'm wondering if we should just unmute and determine if they're speaking in interest, concern, opposition, if they have a question?
Okay, so, so what we do, so let, so we just.
Yeah, so we'll unmute the owner at six Admin Gate.
Okay.
Just to determine what their position is. Jeffrey?
We're re-establishing a connection with Jeffrey. He's dropped off the call.
Okay, so then let's just hear from the agent.
So we won't, we don't have another speaker then. Okay, thank you.
Then we don't have any other speakers.
Okay.
So we'll hear from Ida Evangelista.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members. Ida Evangelista, on behalf of the owner of one eighty-one Poplar Plains. May I, may I?
It seems that you do not have anyone else going to speak on this application. Can I, can I check whether you want to have a brief presentation? Any of the member?
Not particularly, not for me.
But they add the week, it's a good schedule, questions?
I, I believe, Madam Chair, my presentation clearly indicated.
Yes.
Technical variances.
Yes, and then, okay, I, I don't think, I'm waiting for whether they will have questions, but I can ask the first one, which is probably you can address. It's not really a question. It's for part one, part one and part two both, the variance number five, it's FSI, it's from three, five times. Now you want to have increase like three times, right? So can you speak to that? Is it like a common development in the area? Any comparable?
Yes, Madam Chair. I did some investigative research of the neighborhood, and actually, even I've been speaking with planning, it has been determined that, you know, all new reinvestment in this area is all within that range. You know, FSI range from point nine-nine up to, even up to as much as one point three-five.
You see, you mean the majority of the new development, right?
Yeah, new, exactly, Madam Chair. All reinvestment in the neighborhood.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, so any other questions? So I, I do not think we have any more questions. We are ready to discuss this case. Do you want to address us on any other issues?
Just one question about the FSI. Is FSI high because of established grade? And then the basement is included in the FSI calculation or no?
Um, the, as you, as you know, like, part of the basement is included, and that's why we have the depth and the length variances. A small part of the basement is included, and, but major, we do have our third floor, which is quite small, because as we have stepped it in, one point four meters at the front and the back to give the appearance of the two-story. So it's, it's a culmination of things because of the topography of the land.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you.
Hello, and also you're proposing the integral front, integral garage, right? Is that a common feature in the, in the area?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, there are, there are, it's a, it's a mix in this neighborhood. There are of the newer homes, there are the integral garages, and of the older homes, there are, there is a detached garage.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, if I may. I, I think the designs are quite interesting, and I, I note the third floor being set back in the front and the rear. In the rear, you've got a balcony. I'm just wondering if you would have overlook on the north and the south sides, in which case perhaps privacy screening or the glass that you have there might be raised a bit?
I'm not foreseeing a problem with some privacy screening. And I have, I have spoken to the owners next door at one eighty-three, and, you know, we have established a good relationship in the sense that, you know, moving forward in construction, whatever privacy can be maintained will be maintained.
Okay, thank you. If we put that in as a condition, I take it you'll be fine with it, and I think it would help with your neighbors as well.
With the neighbors.
Yes.
So you're, from, through you, Madam Chair, member, are you considering on the north side and on the south side of? on the north side and on the south side of part two?
I believe it may be part one and two, I'm not sure.
So the north side of part one, and then the south side of part two.
And.
Yeah, and on the south side?
And on the south side of part, it's, there's, yeah.
Because you'd have overlook, once both structures are built, it would be overlook on the north and south sides from the respective balconies.
The people that, those, the owners that are actually moving into part one and part two and know each other.
Oh. They don't want privacy from each other?
Yeah.
Are you suggesting to put a condition on, or you just leave it as they will work this out themselves?
I think, Mr. Evangelista, I think you mentioned there's a neighbor on the north side of, is it part one?
Part one, that we have had communication with, and that we will maintain, you know, there will be open communication insofar as privacy. There are a lot of large trees back there, and it is quite, quite private.
So how about if we, since you indicated that the new owners are acquainted with each other, and they may not be concerned about privacy, on part one, north side, and
Yeah.
as part two, south side?
That's fine. Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
And is this on the second floor?
Third floor.
Third floor, okay. All right, so we got that. Okay, any other questions?
No.
Okay, now we are in committee. Thank you. So I think this is a good proposal, right? So.
I never drive past that area quite frequently, and I can see the reason for the redevelopment of some of the older properties. It's a good project. I don't see any downside to either, both to the severance as well as the new structures. My colleagues don't have any concerns. I've put forward a motion to approve the application.
Yeah.
There's a forestry memo, but no condition, and the engineer's standard engineering condition.
Yes, yes.
And privacy screening, north side of part one, third floor rear balcony, south side of part two, rear third-floor balcony.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion? Mr. Gogan, second? All in favor of that condition, those conditions, or approved unanimously? Thank you. It's approved. So now we move to item number twenty-two, twenty-five Brock Avenue. This is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story timehouse by constructing a one-story north side and this rear addition, and to construct a rear third-floor dormer, and the attic will be converted into habitable space. The existing rear one-story addition will be demolished. And we receive a minute of the public hearing on August twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five, and receive revised site plan, four plan elevations, revised site plan and four plan elevation received November fifth. And presentation material from the agent. We also receive a report from urban forestry. And we receive a number of oppositions from twenty-seven Broad Street and a thirteen signature petition in opposition of the owner on Brock Avenue. The material also received from unit one oh five, twenty-seven Brock Avenue. And this is all we have received, yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair, we have the agent online and also other registered speakers online.
Okay.
Hi, good afternoon. Emma, you've been unmuted?
We have not received a valid response. Please try again. Your call.
Is this the agent?
Hi, Susanna, are you there?
I am. I am the architect, and I'm not the registered speaker for today. It's Emma.
Okay, we were having difficulties in connecting with Emma.
Okay, I did see her as list, like, I saw her name appear.
Maybe we can move to the next item, and you try to connect with Emma, we come back to.
Hear me?
Hi, Emma, are you the president?
Oh, hi. Sorry about that. It wouldn't let me unmute. I don't know why, but I could hear you. So you can hear me all now, I assume?
That's good, we can hear you now. Yes. So we're ready for you, and give us your name and address.
Yes, I am Emma West, a planner and partner at Bows Fields at Three Church Street. And I have a presentation. It was one of the files, the supporting material, twenty-four E four, yes. So I'm ready to get started.
Give us a presentation. You have five minutes. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. So I'll start by saying that it's my opinion that the requested variances are appropriate. They meet the four tests, and we recommend approval. You've heard the description of the proposal. Before I talk about the variances, we are aware of the opposition. And the reason that the applicant requested the deferral in August was to reach out to those opposing and to revisit the plans and to address concerns raised. So updated plans were submitted prior to the meeting today, as was mentioned. I just want to touch briefly on the variances. There are four variances. Three of these four variances, variances one, three, and four, also exist on the site today. So I'll explain that. Variance one is related to the depth of the building, and currently on the site, that's eighteen point two meters. If you go to page five of that PDF, this will be very clear. Yes, thank you. So you can see the existing building in gray. You can see the black outline is what is being proposed, and so the blue hatch are the new areas to be added. So the existing depth of the building is eighteen point two meters. That's the variance that's being requested. And you can see that a portion of the blue would also extend into that area of the depth of the building. Variance three deals with the minimum rear yard setback, which is currently six point two meters to that gray area. And so that variance would deal with the existing, but also this new addition that you see in the blue. Variance four deals with a reduction in the existing main wall facing condition, which is the same as the existing condition. And you can see two orange lines between twenty-five Brock and twenty-three, sort of in the middle of the drawing there. And that's where that existing main wall facing condition exists today. So we're seeking a variance on that. Really important to point out, with those three variances that I mentioned, you can see on this drawing that most of the requested change and the change on the property related to the variances is closest to twenty-three Brock there, that you can see with the variances that I mentioned. So the only one of the four variances that is not also occurring currently on the site is related to the FSI. One is permitted, one point three seven is requested. This increase is tied to the increase in the gross floor area. But when you look at this in terms of the footprint of the building, thank you, this is a helpful page six, you can see a comparison of the existing, proposed, existing and proposed floor by floor. So the existing is outlined in blue, the proposed is in the orange. So when you look at this GFA, in the ground floor, there's only an additional five point eight square meters beyond what is there today. And then in the third floor, as you heard, that's to make the attic space habitable. And importantly, this change to the attic space in terms of extending the depth of that area and the height of it is all within the permitted zoning for what exists on the site today and the zoning permissions. So in this way, the roof structure with that bump out of the dormer is really a variance that is related to making that space habitable in the attic, and therefore increasing the FSI. So I'm not going to go into all of the presentation deck there. I think what you'll see in the presentation, I'm sure you've had a flip through it, is more analysis that provides a summary of similar types of conditions and approved variances in the surrounding area. We've listed those out on pages twenty-seven to thirty. And you can see that the requested variances are comparable, including the FSI, and that the proposal has a similar lot pattern and fits with the character. So in conclusion, the variances meet the four tests set out in the Planning Act, and we're available for questions. Thank you.
Okay. So do you want to ask some questions? So actually, I have a quick questions before we hear the other speakers. The most of the opposition are coming from the condo building. I just want to know, to confirm whether the condo was built at a zero setback? The, where the, most of the complaint came from?
Pardon me, can you say that again? The condo was built?
Yeah, the condo, yeah, just almost like circles around your property. The condo, is it built on a zero setback, on lot lines, the building?
Yes, I believe it is a zero setback to their building, which I believe is a conversion of an older building.
And also, they do have open, window openings along this zero setback, right?
They do. And interestingly enough, in terms of the zoning and the setbacks and the permissions and where those windows are located, we've indicated the existing condition within the deck that you have before you and where the windows are located. I think Susanna might still be online. She's the architect, and she would be able to speak specifically to where there are existing windows in the house today, relative to the windows.
I'm not asking about your windows. I know that you have some kind of setback or distance. I'm asking about the condo building. But maybe I can, maybe the people who want to speak later will explain to us. Because it seems that they have openings along the zero lot lines, and I'm just surprised how many existing windows are there. Or there's very few. I just can't figure it out.
The existing, so the existing windows, and if you go back to page five of the presentation deck, it might help you see, again, that it's really only on the ground floor that we're adding extra area on the same side of those condos. The blue hatch triangle that you can see here is that portion that is being added. You can see where the existing footprint of the building is. And also, the windows on the third-floor dormer face, you know, from up on the third floor there. If it was of interest, there could be discussion about screening or a change to the window height, if that would help. I know that the applicant is open to that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'll get more detail later. Okay, thank you. So we have, we're ready for the other speakers.
Through you, Madam Chair, we'll start off with the in-person speakers. Can Alan please walk up to the podium?
Hello, I'm Alan Bond.
Yes.
I live in unit one oh five of twenty-seven Brock Avenue. And actually, if you could put the document that was just on the screen back up, that would be the most helpful, I think, for my presentation. If you go to page twenty-five. That's the one. Can I begin? So my window is on the bottom right of those two images. That's my kitchen window, and I only have two windows in my apartment. And as you can see at the top, there's currently a decent amount of space between the windows. It's five feet and three inches. And you can see that I still have sightlines above the existing structure, even though, as they said, it is a variance that's right in front of my window. If you look at the bottom, the new proposed structure, even though it's a very small increase in square footage, it completely blocks my window entirely. So my unit will go from having essentially two windows to just having one. And the window in question is actually in the setback. So it's just within the first meter of the setback, and the window is a meter across. So what they're planning to build, though it's just one point two meters, is right in front of that window. And any change that they make there to the setback or to the depth of the building will affect that window. And yeah, the structure already has, there's already an obstruction in front of that window, but it is shorter and smaller and further away than what they're proposing. And I still have about two-thirds to half of the sightlines left in that window, in which I can see the trees that you see. I get sunlight into my kitchen. It's a view that's really important for me, and if I lost that, it would have a really negative impact on my quality of life and on my mental health. I have half a dozen plants in my kitchen that would not receive light anymore. And I'm particularly concerned about the property value impact if I essentially just have one usable window. When I bought the property two years ago, it already felt quite dark because of just two windows. And if it had one window that was completely blocked, as they're proposing, I wouldn't have bought it, and I think it will be a tough sell at that point. And it doesn't seem justified to me personally. They told me when I met with them that they wanted to build two home offices, that that was the reasoning. And it just seems like their property value would go up, and they would compromise less, and my property value would go down, and me and my neighbors would have to compromise more. And it doesn't seem justified to me. We were also concerned about clients coming in this door that they're constructing. And they told me that most of the clients they see are on Zoom, but that for the odd client that they see in person, they need this really big office space to fit in this specialized equipment that people with mobility issues need. And it just seems like unfair to try to offer something good to the community while at the same time sort of permanently negatively impacting me. I suggested to them, I told them all my concerns. I said, I don't want the window blocked any more than it already is. You already have a variance. And I suggested that they should rent an office nearby. There's Queen Street down the street, Stundes West, Dufferin. I think there's lots of places where the money that would go to this reconstruction could be used to rent a more suitable space that even has street parking, so their clients with mobility issues could access them more conveniently and more easily. And that wouldn't have any negative impact on me or any of the other neighbors. But they continued with this proposition, which, even though they made some changes, as you can see, it still completely blocks my window. So I'm very worried. I'm very frightened. And let me just look at my notes. I've got a minute left. Yeah, as you heard, about half the units in our building have signed this petition. People are really concerned about it. And looking at the precedents that they have, as I look through them, from what I can tell, none of those are buildings that are surrounded by an apartment building. Those are just row houses, surrounded by other row houses. And to me, that's a very different scenario than what we have here. There's a dozen units on the Brock lofts that will be affected by any changes that they make. So I don't think that those are sort of an equal comparison, and I think this requires some really special consideration because of how many people will be affected. So I don't think those precedents are in line with what's actually being proposed here. Yeah, so I just, you know, I don't want to lose a window. I think that will be more than a minor variance. And it doesn't seem desirable to the people who live in my building. And I don't like the notion of somebody's property value going up at the expense of mine. I can't imagine that that's, you know, in the intent and purposes of the official plan and the zoning bylaws. So thanks for listening.
Thank you. Stay there. I would like to ask you a question. Can the staff bring up this survey, please? Because I think my question was not being answered properly by the agent, but I want to. to bring it up again. My question, the survey on the screen, please, yeah. I want to ask you some question about openings.
Right.
Yeah, the first page of the package is the survey. Yeah. This is a presentation. I want to have the document, yeah, this one. Can you, can we bring up clearer, enlarge it again? Yeah. Okay, my question to you is that you see that your condo, the condo is wrapping, is along the north side and also on the east side too, right? Wrapping around this property. I want to know, along this line with a little drop, all that, it seems that it's at the zero lot line, you do not have any setback, right? Given this?
I don't know.
Okay. So, no, no, okay, the question then is, along this line, are there a lot of opening windows?
Yes, yeah, I have two windows in my apartment, and they both open.
So that is the bill issues here. I will explain later why I see there's some issues here.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Next in-person speaker, we have Sylvia.
Good afternoon, my name is Sylvia Smith. My address is 27 Brock Avenue, Apartment 106. And I did send a presentation, a paper in, is that, I can't actually see, I'm sorry. Is that mine? Okay, can you please go to page two, because I'm going to be referring to it. So my ground, my unit is a ground floor unit. It backs on, directly onto 25 Brock, and it relies entirely on two windows for natural light. And one of these windows faces 25 Brock. So it's the next page, please. Oh.
This one?
Oh, there. So if you can see the first, the picture, the first figure one, it's an actual photo of what I see from my window. And so what the proposal is, that they're going to extend the back so that Area A comes out, 1.5 meters, and it lines up with Area B. And they will also put in a very big sliding, glass sliding doors. You can see it on the right in the diagram that was prepared by the architect. This will, this is, will have a significant impact on my privacy, because that window, that big glass, sliding glass door will be right in front of my window, actually. And so we've got concerns about privacy. And there's also security concerns, because the area will be open to, it's a commercial area. There will be clients coming in and out. The other serious concern that I have, might I just have a, I'm just gonna get some water. The other serious concern I have is the third story addition. And you can sort of see the back of the addition in figure two on the right, right? If you go to the next page in a minute, but currently, the third floor attic has a sloped roof that is barely visible from my window. When I look out, you can't really see it because it's a slope roof. The plan is to replace that slope roof with a full width, flat roof, third story that's 2.9 meters high. This is not a dormer, as described in the application. It's a major structural addition that will dominate the rear view. Figure five, so if you can please go to the next page, and it's, it's a... There, that one. It illustrates, the top illustrates what I can see now, right? What's there now? And it shows the skyline, et cetera. The bottom, the illustration, shows what it will look like with the, with the third Since my unit faces west, the height and width of that new story will block sunlight for much of the day, casting longer shadows over the unit, and the impact on quality of life will be substantial. And I am not alone, because as AJ pointed out, there are, you know, numerous people that are with windows, et cetera, in that, in our building. The concerns that we have, they're not aesthetic, they're about livability, right? Decrease in sunlight, combined with increased shadow, reduced privacy, they'll make our homes significantly darker, less secure, all in the interest of one neighbor who cites commercial interests as a major reason for the renovation, because they're talking about a Pilates studio down on ground floor. I respectfully urge the committee to consider the broader impact of this proposal, and not just applicant's property, but on the well-being of the many residents in our building. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Just a very quick question. I apologize, but I think I missed your address. Are you on the ground floor?
Yes, the ground floor.
Thank you.
Yeah, and it's, I back, my window backs onto...
Their backyard.
The back, their backyard, yeah.
And has been like that since you walked the place?
Yes, absolutely. But like I said, because of the, can you, if you can go to that first picture again, please, you can sort of see the way the addition is right now. The part of the addition that is closest to me has no window, right? But when they blow it out, sorry, it'll have that big sliding glass door.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
To you, Madam Chair, we'll now move on to the online speakers. Hi, Sean, you've been unmuted.
Okay, great, you can hear me?
You can hear you.
You can hear me fine?
All right. You have five minutes to tell us about your concern.
I'm in Unit 104. I'm Alan's neighbor, direct neighbor. I only have a single window, actually, not two. And I'm, I face, I face this home, and yes, I'm equally as affected, as affected as everybody else. Unlike Alan, it's mainly height. I'm concerned with any change in height. And there is a proposed change of height greatly affects my very, very limited view. I have photos in my letter as well of my view, and any change to the property will affect my, my unit value and my living conditions as well. So I support, I support my neighbors fully in this objection.
Thank you. Any questions to the speaker? Thank you. All right. You are finished?
Yeah, I don't, I don't need to keep it long. I'd just also add that the proposed drawings also have a door that, a new door that directly faces my window as well.
Yes, thank you. Okay, the next speaker then. Hello? Yes.
Yeah, everyone can hear me?
Yes.
Great.
Give the name and address, please, yeah?
I'm Dante, and I'm in 204, on the second floor.
Mm-hmm.
And...
Are you on the north side or on the east side of the building, of the condo?
I'm basically right beside, so east.
East side, okay, yeah.
I'm basically, in some of those photos, you can see my, my two windows, right beside the 205. And it's mostly that dormer. I mean, I sympathize actually with everything everyone on the first floor is saying, they're not going to have light and all these things. It's hard for me to tell, based on the imagery, how it would affect me, but it seems like it would, it would affect my privacy if there's that addition above that has windows looking, possibly directly in or at an angle. So basically, as long as, yeah, that's the sort of my concern. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to the speaker? Okay, thank you. All right, so can move to the next.
To you, Madam Chair, that is all the registered speakers for the item. I can bring back the agent.
Okay, we come back to the agent. So...
It's Emma West again. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you. You have five minutes to address the issues that some, all these speakers have brought up, yeah.
Thank you so much. So just with respect to the question of the chair with respect to the building setback, the setback is variable. It's actually on a bit of an angle in some spots, but in most places, the building at 27 is a zero setback. There are a few areas where it pulls away from the property line by maybe half a meter or so, just wanted to explain that. So in most areas, it is a zero setback. One thing I want to touch on in terms of the north property line and the addition of the building on the ground floor in that first story on the north side that we had in the blue hatch on page five, that does not require a variance to add that. That setback is actually permitted. So that's something to keep in mind, that the area that we're talking about in the blue hatch on the north side does not require a variance. And so that is not one of the variances that is before you today. I also want to touch briefly on the third floor addition, the bump out of the dormer and the habitable space on the third floor. As I mentioned in my presentation, the extent of that is permitted in the current zoning in terms of the height and in terms of the setback of that. It doesn't extend as far into the rear as the floors below it, and that second floor extends out further than it, and then the first floor extends out further than the third floor bump out with the dormer. As I mentioned, it does add gross floor area, because right now, the attic space up there isn't included in that. So I think that's important to keep in mind in terms of that being something that the applicant could do today without seeking any variances. In terms of the home occupation, home occupations are permitted use within the zoning bylaw. There are conditions within the zoning bylaw in terms of how much of your home you can take up, and this home occupation complies with the zoning. The proposed area is, you know, just under 10%, and so that's much less than what is permitted in the bylaw. And as was mentioned by some of the speakers, yes, there will be people who visit the site, but 75% of the applicant's work is actually online. The, the, I think I've, I think I've covered most of the points there. It's not a commercial area, it is a home occupation that is permitted, and we're not seeking a variance on the north side. And those are my responses to the comments.
Okay, thank you. Well, I have a question I should have asked them, some of the other speakers, maybe they can tell me more accurately. This is, the 27 is a converted condo building, right? Do you know when it was converted?
I don't know the date of the conversion, no.
2000, okay, all right, thank you. Okay, thank you. That's the information, okay. Any, okay, oh, I see.
Just for the, the strip of property between the two buildings, is it currently just a, of access point, paved access?
If you look at the survey, that's my key frustration of this, because there's a misunderstanding here. If you look at the survey, the applicant to 25 Brock actually owns all this, and then they do not have a setback variance on the north side. They only have a backyard, which is on the, on the east side.
Yeah, we can talk about it.
So, which means that I do not know whether, is the time to, for me to bring this point up?
Currently, there's access. Currently, there's access through that side.
Yeah, because, no, it's not, because, yeah, if they only want to let, they do not have wide awake here. I mean, the condo, the property itself, 25 can always use their own property, for sure, but it's not shared, people's thing.
So I just wanted to make sure it's an accessible route currently.
Yeah, because if it's a share wide awake, the survey will indicate there's a easement or some...
Let's ask the applicant.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yes, there is no easement over that strip of land to the north of the building on 25, that belongs to 25. That is their access into their rear yard. And as mentioned, predominantly, it is a zero setback to 27, but there is no easement for 27 to access the side of their building from 25. I understand that 25 has allowed 27 to come in and do some maintenance in the past, but there is no easement that entitles that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any, any other questions? So we do not have any more questions for you, so we ready for discussion? Okay, we are in committee now. So I, I mean, I read through all the materials, it's not that, I, this is the same issues that I came to me. It's actually, the condo is a converted building, and actually, even at that point, you cannot have that many openings on the zero lot line. That will conturbin actually the building code, not even with zoning. So if they did not pay attention then, did not resolve their problem, it's an inherited problem, and it's not, number 25 created that. I mean, if, if they make a really operable building for the condo, they should have bought that number 25 and leave it empty, so they still can always guarantee those openings. But those openings, in my point, is the trigger of this problem, because if you do not let 25 develop at all, if you say there is privacy and, and, you know, and the existing openings on the condos are actually, to me, conturbin the building code and maybe given zoning, because zoning will not let you have opening on zero setback with some kind of mitigations. So this is result, the inherent problems that...
I like that. So I think this is, this is a downtown problem. This is, the condo is an existing non-compliant building.
No, no, when it's converted, no. When you're converted...
When they're converted, it's non-compliant. It's on the property, it's operable windows, for whatever reason, you couldn't get that built today, if you tried.
Yeah, exactly.
The 25 Brock is, I think, proposing a very modest improvement to their property. The big issue is this no man's land between the two. In a perfect world, the condo occupants and the owner could get together and find an equitable situation to manage light and access and all that. But we have the application that's before us, right? And so I can't, you can't fault 25 Brock for the existing non-compliant situation... And, uh, so I can't, you can't fault twenty-five Brock for the existing non-compliant situation of the condo building. Uh, those windows being operable and at where they are. I think they, they, they have a real challenge themselves for privacy. Uh, and as does, as does the condo, as it issues with privacy from twenty-five Brock. So it's kind of like a equal situation. I don't find, if we go back to the agenda and the proposed variances, I don't find any of them
addressing this.
Major. I find them all minor, myself.
Yes.
So that, that, in a perfect world, as I said, there would be some kind of discussion between the two to find, to manage some of these issues of daylight and privacy. Um, but why not? So it's, it's a very hard discussion, because I know people have property values and also their stuff. But I don't find the, they're, they're maintaining the one point one meter, uh, existing one point three six meter distance continuously between themselves, which I think is a fair solution for item four. Uh, the rear yard setback, I think, is a minor, uh, thing, and then the permitted, the permitted floor space is, for such a small building, it's a, you know, it's just a small increase relative, and, and the building depth as well of a meter increase. So my, I find, I find separate, if we didn't look at the site plan, these are all minor.
Yeah.
Slam dunk. But given the context, it's very challenging.
Yeah, exactly. But I was just saying that it is a, a, a problem not created by number twenty-five. It's really, when they're converting the building, they should have looked into this problem, because probably someone had missed, probably even two thousand, two thousand to still require fire rating between property. And, and, uh, opening this size will have some kind of, uh, measures in terms of fire structures or, uh, or, or pick material, non-compensable material. Opening is a problem on CO lot lines, if you know or know. So it's a creative problem. I'm just trying to explain it. It's not that we're going to resolve it, the problem. I just try to explain to people who come up here to speak up, uh, against this application that the problem here is really created way back into the, when it was converted. And the, uh, uh, number twenty-five, what they're asking, they're not really extending their setback at all. Just maybe one point two meter to the rear yard, and that's all they're asking. And they allow to build to the height and, 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 uh, uh, I guess to this, to the, uh, uh, setback, uh, the sideline setback. They did not ask for more. So I just try to explain, um, the situation here. Okay. Any other?
Are, are we in committee now?
Yeah, we're in committee, yeah. I just wanted to make those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'd like to move a motion, actually.
Yeah, please.
I've heard all the, and issues, and I think our both, you and, uh, Mr. Gogan have explained about existing such circumstance. What we have before us, as McGogan's, uh, mentioned, we've got four variances that all are minor.
Mm-hmm.
And through no fault of, uh, either party, residents in the building next door nor twenty-five, we have the situation, so the, the variances before us are minor.
Mm-hmm.
So I'd like to move a motion to approve this application, and I believe there's only a forestry two condition.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Uh, do we have a second?
No.
Mr. Gogan, second, or in favor of, uh, forestry two condition? Uh, uh, three, one, uh, four?
Descent.
You know, Mr., you dissent?
I dissent for me, yes.
Is it the king dissent?
Okay.
The three, one, uh, proof, thank you, yeah. All right, so, uh, number, the next item is number twenty-two, sixty-four Prince Arthur Avenue. Uh, this item has been deferred from September tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, the purpose is to alter the, um, development standards for a thirteen-story mixed-use building with a three-level underground garage. And by increasing the number of stories, uh, and the building height from thirteen-story forty-five, forty-three meter to fifteen-story fifty-five meters, and increasing the permitted, uh, uh, GFA as well as reducing setback and minimum separation distance and the number of parking spaces. And a car, uh, and a type C loading space will be provided, and parking access will be provided by a vehicle elevator, and there will be a total of forty residential driving units within building, uh, of the lot. We received minute of the meeting, uh, September tenth, and copy of the revised site plan, four plan elevations, couple letter, and also a waste management plan from the agent. And we also received, uh, staff, uh, a report from transportation engineering. That's all. We, uh, we, we see for further up, uh, report from transportation in the supplemental, uh, supplemental package.
Through you, Madam Chair, we have the agent online to speak. No other registered speakers.
Through you, Madam Chair. Um, can I ask the presenter to present under the very late materials? There's revised diagram three and four, and, uh, the agent will speak to these.
Good afternoon, Michael. You've been unmuted.
Thank you. Michael Fodrick here. Um, so I'm a lawyer from McCarthy-Tetro, and I'm agent for the applicant today. And I want to thank the committee in advance for two reasons. One, uh, the deferral of this application last time at our request has allowed some very fruitful discussions and, and some positive developments on this file, which, which has resolved, uh, all, I believe, of the concerns, certainly the vast majority of them. I think, I think all of them, as far as certain parties are concerned, including the city. Um, and, and patience as well, because I'm going to outline the changes that have occurred to the variances since the last time this was in front of the committee, including some late-breaking correspondence that you will have received yesterday. I'll just note in advance, and I'll, I'll ask if the Secretary Treasurer could locate it. There was a correspondence from David Drieger of Planning today, City Planning, which I believe indicated that they no longer have an objection to the proposal based on certain revisions. And I just want to make sure the committee's in receipt of that, and hopefully can locate, locate that. Um, there we are. Uh, yeah, as, as we're seeing here, this indicates that with the revised diagrams three and four, which we provided to the committee on November eleventh, uh, they no longer have concerns, is what I'm reading. Um, so, uh, first, let me outline the, the two sets of changes that occurred. And again, I'm thanking the committee for its patience with, with, uh, understanding this. Uh, the first set of changes took place, uh, soon after the last deferral, the deferral took place in September. We made revisions to it by lowering the building by, uh, a story of four meters. There was also a corresponding reduction in GFA, and this is all outlined on the October, no public notice that went around. There was also a revision at the request of transportation to how the parking spaces were characterized. They had a concern with characterizing the tandem parking spaces as parking spaces, and we've been more than happy to sort of, uh, re-characterize them. So those, those changes which we did, which we, we attempted to sort of assuage some of the concerns we heard, are, are reflected in the variances you have before, even in the notice for this, this public hearing. Um, there were a couple of additional changes I'm requesting, and I'm, I'm hoping we can make those on the floor, uh, today. And specifically, um, we're requesting today, and this was outlined in a correspondence to the tribunal yesterday, deleting variant seven. Variant seven is a, is a type G loading space requirement. We were looking to put in a type C loading space. We're, we're ready to delete that. That was something that, that Transportation from the city, uh, uh, we've been in discussions with them, and, and although there may have been a way forward with the type C, those who follow this issue know that this is something being considered citywide to be a change, that will be implemented citywide. For now, as a way of making peace and of just making, uh, you know, trying to get this, uh, through, we're ready to drop this variance altogether, and so we asked that the committee delete variant seven altogether, and we'll provide the type G as requested. The other thing we've done is provided a revised map three and four. And it doesn't require any change to the text of the variances, but there is a slightly revised diagram three and diagram four. And yeah, they're here. And, and these are the diagrams that come from the site-specific bylaw that do the heavy lifting, if you will, in terms of the setbacks. And so what these diagram, diagram three is a height map, as you'll see, and diagram two, uh, four is a, a, um, uh, setback, front yard setbacks. What we've done is we've increased some setbacks. We've, we've done, this particular change was important to city planning. And the other, uh, diagram, we, we revised to increase some of the setbacks, uh, and that seems to have satisfied city planning, and so that's what we're proud to ask you for today. Um, and so I'll just say that, that we believe we have, obviously by removing that variance resolved the one thing that Transportation seemed to have been concerned about, the type G loading. And, and again, you seem to have a letter of support from Planning there. And we're aware of no other, uh, parties objecting to this, at least not here, uh, today. And we know there's an explicit letter of support from the neighbor to the west, in fact. It's a site-specific bylaw. It's a rental building we're trying to get built. And the height map changes, and I just asked very quickly to refer to the architectural drawings, because it will show how de minimis the changes in the setbacks are relative to the as of right. It's very, very minor, and that's overlaid on the architectural drawing. If you go to page nine, for example, and I'll be very quick, in the, or, sorry, this is, uh, yeah, page nine of the architectural drawings. You can see, just go up to the second floor. Let's go to the second floor ever so briefly, uh, if you go up to the second floor. So what you see here, thank you for zooming in, you'll see the building, but you'll also see what's described as the approved building envelope. So that comes from the site-specific bylaw, and I'm, we can go through several of the floors. But this one, we'll, we'll do that briefly perhaps. But this is illustrative of how closely mirrored the, the proposed building, if you will, is to the existing approved building in the site-specific bylaw. And, and really, there were some specific architectural, uh, designs that were incorporated and shrink wrapped, if you will, in the original site-specific bylaw, and we're just tweaking those boundaries to accommodate a slightly revised design. And I want to illustrate that by showing some more floors. If we were to scroll down and look at some other levels, as, as you can see, uh, again, we don't necessarily need to go through all of them, but we certainly could if there was a desire to. And it was pausing there for a moment. That's the third to the sixth floor. You'll see that approved zoning envelope and dashed lines, and you'll see where I always had that jagged edge before, and we're just kind of straightening it off, right? So, so it doesn't materially increase the setbacks. Uh, certainly, there's nothing in terms of the, the four tests, uh, you know, the intended purpose of the site-specific or general zoning bylaw, uh, uh, whatnot that is offended by those, those slight modifications, but they are necessary, uh, to allow this revised design to proceed. And again, it's a rental building. We're very proud of it, and we think these, this height map comparison is, is demonstrative of how minor the changes are. We, we are, there's two additional stories being requested here, from thirteen to fifteen stories. Originally, it was sixteen stories, but now it's fifteen stories. Um, and so, so that's a modest height increase, which, which importantly still, uh, you know, respects the intent and purpose of, of the original bylaw and doesn't, uh, bring this building into, uh, you know, non-compliance, uh, in other ways. And again, we seem to have satisfied city planning in that respect by removing the additional story, among other changes we made to the front yard setback. And I know there was some commentary in some of the previous correspondence from Planning about that front yard setback, talking about how the architectural feature we had proposed at the front wasn't consistent with the other setbacks along the frontage of Prince Arthur, but by removing it, we think we put that to rest. We know, in fact, we've put it to rest. At least of our city planning is concerned, and now we have something more consistent with the other setbacks along Prince Arthur. So, so in summary, and again, I'm happy to elaborate as, as the committee may desire, but we do believe it meets the, the four tests, in particular, the intent and purpose of the official plan. We're in an area that, that is a, you know, close to major transit stations, and it's, you know, tried by now to talk about how important it is to get, uh, you know, new housing built, and especially rental housing built in those areas, and this is, again, a mid-rise building, uh, so it's not as aggressive as, as many other proposals we see in the area. It doesn't prejudice neighbors from redeveloping their properties, uh, in the manner that they so see fit. And then intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw, which was intending to create a building very similar to this one, uh, you know, we've just tweaked the, the various boundaries, uh, to, to address the revised architectural design as is necessary. And, and, and again, we think that's, uh, self-evidently minor, um, and, and something that the committee, uh, should say is keeping within, uh, the intent and purpose. And again, being desirable development for the neighborhood, um, this is a bit of a forlorn property that we're anxious to see redevelop, and it's a real project that we actually want to get to the ground. So, um, subject to your questions, uh, committee, uh, that's our presentation, and we would urge you to support it.
One question, yes, you're deleting areas number seven, you're providing a type G, right?
Correct.
That we do, we have to revise the purpose clause. Um, we have to delete the.
Sure.
That, the, they already mentioned type C loading.
Right, absolutely, that's a fair point. We, uh, we are prepared to provide the type G, as, as I said.
Okay, so we, we amend that, all right.
I should add, and, and I may just, uh, add this footnote, uh, there was a PPR done as well, uh, the last, um, following the last, um, uh, time this was for the committee, it resulted in two minor variances related to driveway width, which you see reflected, uh, as well. But those I consider de minimis, uh, just about the driveway width. And again, I, I'm aware of no objection from Transportation in relation to those minor driveway width variances which were identified on the last PPR. I, I should have added that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank, uh, any questions? I, we have any more speakers with us? Okay. No more questions now. We are in committee. Yeah, anyone, what is that? Mr. McKay? Yes, please.
I think it's, it's great. Uh, the, uh, loading dock was sort of the key issue for me, and I'm glad to see that that's being revised. So I would move, uh, approval of the, um, revised application. I see an urban forestry condition. Uh, Madam Chair, do you want to have that purpose, uh, changed?
Yes, I think so, because they mentioned this, uh, type C, yeah.
Okay.
We should delete that, uh, half clause, yeah.
Well, through you, Madam Chair, the purpose of application gets amended and removal of variance number seven. So it's approval as amended.
Yes. Okay, and.
Thank you. Before you second, can I make a comment?
Yeah, please, okay.
Yeah, so, um, usually, these things kind of slide through.
Ah, can you?
These additional floors just kind of slide through. And as I look at this, and I look at the massing of the building, I'm starting to feel that this is not minor. Like, this is a big addition. This is a lot of, this is a lot of height being added to the building in proportion to its existing massing. And you know how these applications go. Th- these are very complex. To get the height and zoning they got originally was a compromise. So I, I'm really struggling with this one, to be honest. I think that this is borderline on a rezoning, not a mi- not a minor variance. Um, because I just find it, um, it's a, I kind of feel like it's, uh, it's not in the spirit of the original zoning that was achieved. Um, this additional height, density, shadows, so on and so forth. So, um, uh, that's just my, that's my comment for the group. Um, I, I, and I'm really having trouble supporting it personally, so.
Okay, no, it's fair. No, no, I, I should have, uh, let more discussion before we can.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, Mr. Gogan's got a good point, because I think the original application was for thirteen.
Yeah, fourteen, and they, it was two.
Of course, it was requesting sixteen, so now it pulled it back, so.
So.
Yeah, uh, like, this increase of a seven hundred and ninety-five square meter, which is like, uh, ten thousand square feet, right? Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's partly the, like, impact on shadow study, impact on neighbors, uh, the kind of the, you know, every, you hope when they do a rezoning like this, everyone leaves equally unhappy. You know, the developer didn't get everything they wanted, and the residents didn't get everything, but it was a compromise, and it went through. And I feel like coming back for a rezoning for this, although residents in New York could also comment on it as well, but anyway, I just feel like it's, I, 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 I don't feel, uh, keeping with the original kind of, uh, fear, the original zoning.
And no one come forth, uh, to oppose this, yeah. It's, oh, okay. So.
I'm still with my motion. So, uh, I, I, I'm moving, uh, that we approve the revised, uh, application. I know for committee, sometimes we're concerned about, let's say, a site-specific zoning and how, how quickly and perhaps how high a, a, you know, my variance application may add to, may add to that. But I know this area very well, and, uh, I, I think it's appropriate.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That means a lot.
If I may just, and I think to, uh, to Mr. McKay's, uh, point, we've got a few buildings just, um, I think it's on Huron, one of Huron and Blue as well.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you know, about two, three towers that are going to be quite tall. And we did have some issues with them coming back and requesting additional height and so on. They were refused. Um, it's a pity that we didn't have any comment from any of city staff about this particular application, because that would certainly help. But having said that, I, I think, uh, to Mr. McKay's, uh, uh, motion, I think it's supportable at this point.
Mm-hmm. All right, so are you seconding that?
Certainly, I'll second that.
Yeah. Okay, uh, as, uh, second, all in favor of amended, uh, Mr. Gogan's dissent, right?
Thank you.
Dissent, okay. And three, one, approve. Just approve applications, okay. Do we need, uh, a, a break? A couple of five minutes?
Seven minutes?
Seven, seven, huh, okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Five. Yeah.
Okay, members, please turn off your videos, microphone.
We're back. And item number twenty-three is one six one Delaware Avenue North. Uh, this is to convert the existing rear one-story old series building, which is a detached garage into a two-story laneway street. Uh, by constructing a second-story addition, as well as, uh, uh, some interior alteration. And there will be a total of five residential dwelling, uh, four in the main house and one on the, uh, the Lingway House. We receive the minute of, uh, September tenth public hearing and we revise site plan for plan elevation. And a couple letter from the agent, and we receive comment from transportation engineering. And on the, uh, the supplemental package, uh, we, we have received, um, urban forestry, uh, uh, condition three. Yeah. Alright, thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair, we have the agent online to speak with no other registered speakers.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Yes, so you have a name and address and, yeah, we can start from there. Thank you.
Uh, Sean Galbraith, planner here on behalf of the application, eighteen King Street East, Suite fourteen hundred, Toronto, Ontario.
Yeah, I I do not think you have any opposition, so I I I'm I'm going to check whether anyone wants that presentation. We do not have, have a need for presentation. Do, do I have any questions?
No, I think this is a very straightforward application. The variances only apply to the second floor.
It's fine. I was asking the panel members. That's why you answered, you answered it for them. Thank you very much. Uh, it's, it's fine. Uh, so, uh, do, do you want to address, anything you want to address us? And otherwise, we will just move into a discussion.
I think I just covered it.
You, you, we have, uh, received, uh, urban forestry, uh, condition of three. That's, that's okay with you, right?
Um, I, I, oh, here's foresters. I'm sorry, I didn't see that, um.
No, I'm so sorry. Uh, it's not from the supplemental, it is from the period is, uh, uh, hearing. There's a urban forestry condition three from the deferred package. And I think that still apply, right?
I would assume so. I don't think we have any issue with that. The front of the building or the front of the property is currently under, under construction with, uh, um, an as-of-right fourplex, um.
I think you need to protect the trees anyway, right?
Yeah, exactly. I don't, I don't see this being an issue.
Okay, yeah, that's it. Uh, we are in committee now. But, okay, Mr. Byatt.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I remember this one coming before us. Um, I think it's a, an excellent project, particularly for the location. Um, so I think it's, uh, a very good, uh, proposal. I don't see any downside to any of the variances that are presented. Uh, and there are no conditions attached to this particular application, uh.
But we still impose the, uh, the urban forestry condition.
That still apply from the past?
Yeah, has not issued new ones.
So that would be, uh, what is it, number two?
Three.
Number three.
Because they haven't deleted it, so we better include it.
Okay, so forestry number three would be the only condition. So I'd like to move approval with that condition in mind.
Okay, Mr. McKay second? Yes. All in favor of condition number three, urban forestry, uh, unanimous, the approval? Yeah, thank you. Thank you. And, uh, we move to, uh, uh, item number twenty-four, which is twenty-eight, uh, that thirty-six Halton Street. This is to convert the existing three-story heritage building into apartment buildings by constructing a rear four-story addition. And 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 a size three-story addition and a side west, west side three-story addition. There will be a total of forty-eight dwelling units on this lot. Then the proposal is subject to a safe and control application. We have, uh, received the minute, uh, from the November twentieth, uh, two thousand twenty-four hearing and a copy of surveys, revise site plan for plan elevations, couple letter, and also our first report from the agent. We receive comments from, uh, the, uh, community planning, a support letter from, uh, Austington Community Association and opposition material from twenty Halton Street. And that's the whole the material we have received. Thank you. We are ready for the agent.
Through you, Madam Chair, we have the agent online to speak and also two registered speakers online to speak.
Yeah, I was speaking again, uh, in opposition.
One in support and one in opposition.
Okay, so, alright, thank you. Hi.
Hi, Matthew Lang, agent for the applicant, address ninety-five Bond Street in Guelph.
Yeah, it seemed that you have some opposition, so we would like to have a pre- uh, presentation from your five minutes maximum. You can, as you can have the material brought up on the screen before we can start the timer.
Great, I, there's two items, uh, on, I'd like to present. One, the presentation you have before you. The other is an email. Also dated November eleventh. I'll speak to the email at the end. Um, one, one item I'd just like to note, um, I believe we have the support of Mr. Whipple now. And that's one thing that I'll speak to as well. His email's on, on the record as well as mine. But, um, first of all, I I'd just like to thank the committee for, uh, the deferral last time so that we could go and kind of put our pencils back to work and submit this revision that you have here today. Um, as you noted, we have support letters from city planning, heritage, the Austington Community Association, uh, and our neighbor, Mr. Whipple at twenty Halton Streets. If you could please go to the next page. So just a little bit of history, um, we started our initial pre-application meeting with the city about four years ago. And we've gone through many, uh, revisions as well as zoning reviews. Um, as I stated, we have the support. We've actually, uh, received our designation bylaw with heritage. Um, and heritage has actually used this, uh, design and this proposal in their materials as an appropriate infill development and conservation of a heritage building. Uh, next, in terms of the rationale, we really were starting to build upon that missing middle and expanding housings, housing options in neighborhoods, um, as well as the official plan allowing four stories. Uh, next, please. So in terms of the missing middle and and where we fall in that, um, again, low-rise apartment buildings are permitted. Next, and I just wanted to give an example of a city-initiated and city-approved, uh, application at seventy-two Amraff. It's for a six-story infill building. Next, please. In terms of the variances, we have four variances now in total. Uh, one is for height. And again, four-story buildings are permitted in the official plan. And the reason for our height variance as well is to match the floor-to-ceiling heights of the existing heritage building. In terms of our building depth, um, again, this is a very unique property. And we are actually generally in keeping with the alignment of the rear portion that a butt supply this lane. Um, some of the revisions that we did make from previous to current, based on, um, review with, with our neighbor. Um, we did move some of that density further back, again, adjacent to the, uh, private lane, uh, public lane, excuse me. Uh, next page, please. Uh, in terms of density, we're still maintaining a one-point-six times density. Um, again, it is a very unique site. We're able to spread that throughout, uh, the property, so it's not sort of all massed in one area. Um, interesting, as you'll see in our context plan, the city has approved a ten-story building immediately, well, adjacent north of us. Um, yes, it does front out at Dundas, but what's also interesting is we share the same zoning. Um, and that building is a three-point-five times density. In terms of our last variant side yard setbacks, um, obviously, we have a zero mirror condition adjacent to the semi-detached dwelling. And on the other side, we have a zero-point-eight-two, which still allows for a walkway between buildings. Uh, next, please. So just in context, as you can see, our building in the center there, um, kind of unique in this, in the sense of its large site um, and building. Uh, next, please. I just wanted to provide this to give a little bit of context in terms of the side yard conditions. Um, in terms of the existing streetscape, uh, most buildings are compact and adjacent to each other with small walkways in between. Next, please. And we do have a certain mix of uses on the street. Um, there's a lot of semis, um, tunnels immediately south of us. Um, are are technically three stories, but as you can see, it's a, um, there's a, a lower floor as well as a dormer floor there. Um, next, please. And this is just a couple of the, um, uh, views and context. Um, so as you can see, the heritage building is in the center, um, wings adjacent to, uh, the sides. And in the four-story building, uh, replacing the existing building at the rear. And then the last page is a site plan, um, which we can go into more detail if there's any questions, um, about that. If we could please present the email from November eleven. So, um, this email is, is in response to the submission materials. And if the committee was to deem this application appropriate, we would propose two conditions, uh, if you will. One is that, um, we have agreed to for the east wing of the building, adjacent to twenty Halton.
Yeah, your five minutes is up. So, uh, can we come back to you, uh, after we hear the oppositions?
Yeah. Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Jamie, you've been unmuted?
Hi, I'm Jamie Wowe. I live at ten Holton Street. Uh, my primary concern with the application for variances is just the sheer amount of apartments that this is going to allow to be built on this site. It's currently an old age home. Uh, I'm pretty sure all the tenants of this building right now don't actually drive vehicles. And there's not really a requirement for parking from the residents of this building. And I can imagine that forty-eight new apartments is going to have a decent amount of those folks drive vehicles. And there's been little to no accommodation for parking with this building. And the development of Austington, the development of a garage behind this building into a, um, fitness studio, Cafe Toronto, the popularity, the increased popularity of Trinity Bellwoods Park, the farmer's market that takes place there every single Tuesday, there is massive strain on parking in this neighborhood. And we've been here since two thousand and seven, and it's getting worse, and it's getting worse, and it's getting worse. And every time I come home from work, I feel like I'm playing the Hunger Games and finding parking in this neighborhood. And I just can't fathom forty-eight new apartments and the vehicles that'll belong to those owners or tenants trying to find parking in this neighborhood when it's already constrained. And to make it worse, the city has decided to take the forty-spot Green Pea parking lot um, just north of this, um, proposed redevelopment and turn it into Um, just north of this, um, proposed redevelopment, then turn it into, um, uh, low-income housing, again, with no parking. So I, I find this to be an outrageous overdevelopment with far too many apartments, especially considering that there's been no accommodation for parking. And that is my primary concern with this application.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, you still have, uh, some time, do you have any more, uh, concerns you'd like to tell us?
I, I would just, I would just further to say, you know, if, 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 if my concerns aren't taken into consideration, it just shows me that the city isn't listening to the people that actually already live in this neighborhood. And have owned properties in this neighborhood for years.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we can have the agent, uh, response to your concerns, what they, what they got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the next speaker, we have a speaker in support, Bill, you've been unmuted. Hello, Bill.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Am I audible? It's Mr. Whipple.
Yes, we can hear you, Bill, please proceed.
Thank you very much, um, good evening, everyone, I know this one has gone late. Thank you for, thank you for the break a little bit before, my name is Bill Whipple, I live at twenty Halton Street. I live directly to the east of the proposed, uh, shall we say redevelopment of the Manor Nursing Home. Um, we were here all together about a year ago, and I, I'd like to thank everybody here. Uh, I, uh, for giving us the time to work with Michael, his team. Uh, share what we, as the people who live here and have lived here for a long time. And I'm hardly the longest living, uh, neighbor here, uh, but I've been here over a quarter century. So, anyway, I'm going to be really brief, I am in support of this project, I have a few conditions. They've been acknowledged in correspondence, it's been shared with the committee, essentially for myself and also for the spirit of the street. Uh, Michael and his team have pushed the, uh, southern setback of the proposed east wing of their development, the three-story. That is adjacent to my property, they push it back so that, uh, my windows, and I've been listening to people talk about windows all night. My windows are not obstructed, which I appreciate. Um, so I get to look at the beautiful building that I've been looking at for a very long time. Setting that aside, um, I want to thank Michael for making the time to talk to me. To go on a neighborhood walk with me, to talk about the history of development here. Uh, we are, I think, I, I speak for myself, I, and I think most of my neighbors are in favor of having more neighbors. It's the nature of a city, and we want to see it grow, it's going to grow fast, thank you, Jamie, by the way, uh, neighbor and a friend. Who, you know, brings up the parking issue, I think that has to be considered, but essentially, I am, uh, in support with conditions, the window thing, the, the southern setback, which is documented, and then just a kind of ongoing stuff. This is a huge development, it's a redevelopment, um, and, uh, my house is held up by a retaining wall, that will be an issue for construction. Um, you know, we have trees here, we're trying to preserve as, you know, in keeping with the city's, uh, plan to keep us green, we've actually added a tree this year instead of losing two per year, which has been our thing. Um, so we're going to work on that, essentially, uh, my other condition is ongoing friendly cooperative. Community-oriented communication between development, developers, the city and the residents. Who know the neighborhood maybe a little better, but I'm going to bet most of you have walked Halton Street as the release valve between the glories of Arlington and the calming of Trinity Bowards Park. And if you haven't, maybe your dog walker has, maybe your grandfather has, maybe a visitor from out of town has. It's an important street, it's tiny, but it serves a critical purpose. And that's not just, you know, me saying it, I think objectively. So, Michael seems to get that, developer, I get it, my neighbors get it, we all want to work together, let, and, you know, that's the spirit of this. So thank you very much, uh, I am in favor with those conditions, you know, ongoing cooperation from today to the day they cut the ribbon, welcoming our new, uh, neighbors, but doing it in a balanced way. And also not annihilating local businesses, you know, than, yes, aside from the nursing home. What can we do? It's going to change, everything's going to change, thank you, uh, you guys are always very patient with me. And, uh, I, I wish you a lovely evening, and I appreciate everyone's time from Michael, my neighbors. Uh, the Manor Nursing Home staff, uh, local businesses, the Arlington Association, Jennifer, everyone. Thank you all, have a good evening.
Thank you so much, yes. All right, so, um, let's have the, uh, do we have a question for the speaker? Okay, we don't, and then, uh, do we have more speaker?
Through you, Madam Chair, no more speakers, I will bring the agent back online. Hi, you've been unmuted.
Hi, thank you, um, could you please post the November eleventh email again? Um, I, I'd like to thank Mr. Whipple specifically, um, he, uh, he, he's been great to work with. Um, it, we, we worked very well, uh, again, we've been in this neighborhood a while. Um, and we are, uh, looking to maintain the good relationships and, uh, a, a, and we want to keep that going. So, if, again, if the committee were to deem this acceptable, we put forward two conditions, um, how, I know I haven't worded it maybe properly. Uh, I might need, uh, Sabrina to assist, but number one, um, as, as Mr. Whipple noted, uh, our eastern wing. Uh, our south extension towards Halton Street, um, we will not extend that beyond Mr. Whipple's western chimney. Um, again, that's to me.
He seemed to have lost him, right?
Hi, Matthew, are you still there?
Three, you, Madam Chair, his.
I'm so sorry, can you hear me? I'm so sorry about that, I, I, I'm so sorry, I was getting a call. Um, so sorry about that, so in the second condition, again, wanting to maintain awesome relationships with our neighbors. And maybe this isn't an, an appropriate condition, I just wanted to make a note. Um, because I know they did attend the first hearing, they're not here tonight. But I just wanted to ensure that we will, um, make sure that we do pre- and post-construction surveys. Um, maintain best practices, maintain open communication, um, with them as well. Um, in terms of Jamie's comment related to the parking, as you can see, we do not have a parking variance here tonight. Um, totally appreciate his comments about parking, we are proposing nine parking spaces, four of which are visitor. Um, obviously, there is a big push by the city, um, to make it a market condition as opposed to a bylaw-specific condition, which is why there's no variance here tonight. That being said, um, we believe that the parking proposed is appropriate based on, um, the projects that we are doing of a similar size and scale. So, those are my comments again, I just wanted to say thank you to the committee for your time, um, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Sure, yes, uh, do we have questions? No, okay, we, we do not have any questions for you, uh, we are a committee now, okay? Yeah, who wants to take this off, yeah, Mr.?
I'll, I'll start it off, Chair, uh, just with some comments, I think, um, I was present for maybe one or the other occasions when this was presented, and I'm very glad to see that it's come back, uh, improved. And, uh, I think the comments that Mr. Whipple, I think it is, made with regard to the interaction with the applicant. Is wonderful to hear, um, and it's perhaps a lesson for other agents as well, other applications as well. But I do not see any downside to this application at all. And having said that, if my colleagues don't have any concerns, I'll move a motion, pardon me, I'll move a motion to uh, approve this application, and, uh, I believe.
Don't move this any.
There aren't any conditions at all.
Yeah. Do we have a second?
Sorry, through you, Madam Chair, based on, uh, what you heard from the agent and the conditions that he was suggesting. The first one, perhaps maybe the committee can consider an approval tying to site plan.
Yes.
Uh, particularly regarding the location of the three-story east wing building.
Yeah.
Um, and that would be drawing number A one point zero one dated September thirtieth, or received by committee September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. The second condition about pre- and post-construction surveys, they're not going to be able, uh, to fulfill this condition before uh, permits are issued, so that's something that would be agreed upon between the two landowners, private from city.
Yeah, so we do not.
So, no, that wouldn't be an appropriate condition because it would be difficult to fulfill.
Yes, so we only have one condition, which is the title of the site plan. All right, so, uh, Mr. McKay, you still want to second that?
Yes, I will.
Yeah, okay, Mick, with that condition, all in favor? All in favor, unanimously approve, thank you, it's approved. Okay, the next item is, uh, two hundred, uh, Queens, Queens Key West. This is to alter the development standards of, uh, site-specific, uh, zoning bylaw for new thirty-nine story mixed-use building. And, uh, and, uh, four below-grade parking levels, a total of nine hundred seventy-four dwelling units. Of which seventy-eight, uh, affordable rental units. And it's, uh, uh, they're seeking to reduce the number of residential visiting parking spaces and long-term bicycle parking spaces. We have received a survey site plan for elevation. And the red line notice, um, and the one photograph and a couple letter, uh, from the agent. And decision affecting the property and also presentation material from the agent, and also the site-specific zoning bylaw. We have also received, uh, comment from, uh, Transportation, Right Away Management, um, Development Review. And, uh, from the, uh, supplemental package, we have received the, yeah, the, uh, revisions. The red line notice and a couple letter from the agent.
Through you, Madam Chair, we have the agent here in person to speak and no other registered speakers, please proceed to the podium.
Good evening.
Hi, so, yes, uh, thank you, that give us your name and address and, and seem to be a a short application, I hope.
So, yeah, hi, it's, uh, my name's Kelly O'Handlin, I'm the agent of this file, Director of Development at Dimacorp. Uh, together, we're developing this property with lifetime developments.
Yes. And, and there's some revision, you're deleting, uh, variance number one?
Yes, deleting variance number one, so the only variance before you right now is number two, um, related to the bicycle parking.
Mm-hmm.
Um, variance one is being deleted in consultation with, uh, city planning.
Mm-hmm.
It's no longer relevant, given that we're within, um, an approved PM TSA. So the minimum parking requirements are no longer enforceable within this area.
Oh, I see, so there's no change that you, you, then you still meet, it's just automatically deleted because you're not required?
Yeah.
Yeah, I see.
Exactly.
Oh, that, they give the big break, yeah?
Yeah.
All right, so, uh.
And through you, Madam Chair, then that would also, uh, amend the purpose of application?
Yeah, I think.
So the removal, yeah, you did do that, sorry, it's just hard to see on the screen.
Yeah, we have to revise, uh, that, uh, revise that one too, yeah. It's the, they may eliminate the minimal number parking. So we got it, right? So, so, okay, so everything is ready.
I was just going to ask if the transportation condition still applies with the related to the bicycle parks.
If the what, sorry?
If the, uh, transportation condition.
Yes.
That's.
Yes, and we are happy and accept that condition as well, so.
Thank you.
All right, so, uh, do we require a presentation, you just good?
Just a question.
Questions, yeah, let's go into question, right?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Can you share how much parking you're going to provide?
How much parking we're going to provide, um, so there's four levels, uh, four levels underground, um, I think we are at four hundred and sixty-six spaces, two of those, so it's an interesting application, um, two of those levels are actually commercial parking. So it, before it's demolished now, it was an eight-story parking garage, um, on this site. So there's a lot of historical parking obligations with surrounding condominiums, so a lot of, half of the parking is actually commercial.
Okay.
I think I parked in that building.
Yeah. Yeah, lots of, a lot of Jay's attenders.
All right, so, uh, any more questions, no? Okay, good, we don't have any more questions now, we in committee. Uh, we, uh, Mr. Byatt, it seems that you like to take that on, yeah?
I, 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 I was very sad to see the big parking garage go, and it's historical. In any event, uh, I, I think this is a, an, uh, very, very straightforward application and, uh, really not problematic at all. Um, so this is an amended application with a transportation condition.
Mm-hmm.
I don't believe there's any, anything else to this one, so I'd like to move approval.
Yes, uh, Mr. McKay second?
Yes, sir.
McKay second, and all in favor with those, uh, amend the agenda and the condition transfer, all in favor, unanimously approve. It's approved, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, now, we, uh, num, uh, at number twenty-six is sixteen Trenton Avenue. This is to construct a new two-story detached dwelling. And to permit as well as maintain the exterior wall constructed above gray and interior alteration to the ground floor. Uh, construct them beyond building permits. Also is to construct a new one-story or serial building, uh, detached garage in the rear yard with, uh, vehicle access from Rammy Road, and there will be a total of two residential dwelling unit on this lot. And as, uh, more than fifty percent of the existing exterior wall had been removed to order the to order the existing one-story dwelling, uh, and, uh, approve under, uh, minor variances and also a, a building permit, there will be, uh, it will be reviewed as a new building with this application. A pop, we have received a copy of survey site plan for plan elevations, four photographs and couple letter, uh, from the agent. And decision affecting the property and our first report from the agent and, uh, also uh, uh, enclosed the building permits, uh, affecting the property. And that's the, the, all the thing, material we receive, yes. We're ready for the agent.
Through you, Madam Chair, we just have the agent registered to speak and they're online.
Okay. And then no other people want to, uh, who I speak besides the agent, okay?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and committee members, my name is Sabal Letn from QBS Architects, I am the agent.
Okay, it, it, it seem that, uh, you're, you're seeking for variances, it seem that it's not, uh, with, uh, complicated. Uh, application, I just want to check, anyone wants the presentation?
Just a question.
You want to ask them, yeah, we, we do not need, uh, presentation from you, but we do, uh, have questions.
Absolutely.
Go, go ahead.
I wonder if you might just speak to variance number three?
So the, uh, issue here is, if you recall, we were before you about two months ago. And, uh, construction commenced as, uh, the building permit that we obtained. During the building permit, uh, it was discovered the joists, the studs. They were, the joist and studs, they were rotten, so unknowingly the contractor. They sistered the joist with taller one, but when doing that, uh, like, so they removed the wall cladding. And they removed some of the, the studs. Uh, the inspector deemed the building, because they removed more than fifty percent of the existing walls. So deemed the building as new, we were requested to go back to the building permit, new zoning. So, we are before you here. So we are before you here to basically legalize an existing situation. So now, instead of having a renovation that was approved, we are before you to have uh a new by renovation house. So all the setbacks are existing to remain because the foundation was not touched, like the foundation was existing. Same thing for the dwelling and the garage.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, other questions? No, yeah, it is uh we we do not have any more questions.
What's the status of the project?
Uh it's it was on hold because there was a stop work order issued, so we are waiting for the revised building permit, so the work can commence.
Okay, yeah, that's good, yeah. Uh any other questions? So, okay, we are in committee now. It seems that they have to do this to in order to correct some, you know, doing something they do during construction. Okay, that's, do we have a comment or, yeah?
I'd like to move this.
Yes.
I think, um like to move, first of all, uh to recognize the kind of the issues that related to the the site construction as well as these, these variances are truly minor in nature and do address specific site conditions unique to the property. So I propose that we um approve this application. And I don't believe there's any.
No conditions, no conditions.
I don't notice either. Okay, Mr. McKay is second, and all in favor of no conditions, uh unanimously, it's approved, thank you. Uh so we uh item twenty-seven, which is one uh one thirty-four and thirty-one thirty-six Jarvis Street. This is to construct a commercial parking lot, uh surface parking facility with fourteen parking spaces. And um that including one uh accessible parking space with vehicle access from the, from harbor lane. The existing two-story non-residential dwelling at building located in one thirty-four Jarvis Street will be demolished. And we have received a survey site plan for elevation, three photographs and a couple letter and and presentation material and planning rationale from agent. We have received a transportation, a comment from transportation engineer. And that's all the material we have received. Yeah, thank you. We are ready for the agent first.
Through you, Madam Chair, we have the agent here in person to speak and no other registered speakers.
Yes. You do not have any opposition, so uh you like a presentation or straight to questions?
Straight to questions, perhaps.
I I do have a question too, yes.
I don't have any.
Go ahead with the question.
I I actually, I I think I don't really have a question.
Okay, I do have a, let me go then.
Uh go ahead, you go ahead.
Okay, my question is, that this, I I I have read the material, it seems it's a temporary measure, right? Temporary parking facility. Do you know there any kind of protection, how long that will be?
Um yeah, so it's our hope that the length of the temporary approval would be as long as possible, given uh the considerations related to additional approvals for the parking lots, that site plan, building permit, uh as well as considerations for future redevelopment on the site, which would be a major rezoning, site plan approval, um building permit as well, as well as market conditions. Um there is precedent, a colleague of mine uh at the last session was approved uh the site at one thirty-one River Street, a temporary use of six years. We would appreciate.
Yeah, and that's exactly, I mean, it's like, uh as long as possible means eternity, right? So, but not like we we can do that. Uh I would like to know, that's a more like def- uh definitive timeline. So uh because in your, in your presentation material, you kept mentioning about the a chance for exploration of the future development, uh what is the stage in that exploration? And you think that six years will allow you to finish it?
Yeah, um essentially, you know, optimizing the development of the site will take, you know, an assembly of properties uh to a certain extent, and we feel that that the six-year temporary um use would allow us the time to at least, you know, explore that possibility. Um and also limit, you know, coming back to the committee to ask for extensions of of time and burdening the committee further.
Okay.
Sorry, Chair, I may, um given that we're looking at a six-year uh initial uh time period, potentially going up to maybe a couple more, um the surface of the parking lot, is it possible for that to be in some fashion permeable? I know we get permeable asphalt and not, don't want you to be burdened with extraordinary expense. But since this is going to be around for quite a while.
Yeah, uh we've given consideration to, you know, City of Toronto's greening uh surface parking lots. Um as well, anything related to the ultimate condition would be considered through a site plan, through a detailed design. Um but it's something we would definitely take into consideration.
We add that in as a condition in some, I'm I'm just wondering, don't wanna make it too onerous for for you. But at the same time, if we can put something in place, a wording that works for you as well as for the city in terms of permeability.
Uh we'd be happy to explore that with staff as a, as a.
So that the surface would be permeable. Can we word it like that? Would that work?
For, yeah, we'd be happy to explore permeable.
Yeah, and you can explore whatever the.
No, condition is not going to explore.
It's gonna be, well, is this gonna be a City of Toronto lot or is this gonna be privately operated lot?
Private lot.
It's a private lot, yeah.
The city has standards and the city themselves don't use permeable pavement. Because they need to plow it, they need to plow it and permeable paving tends to get destroyed.
Yeah, I think they have to meet uh city standards, yeah. That's why I think that maybe you're go get, you know, getting ahead a bit, yeah.
Yeah, that's why, as I was saying, it's it's something that we would consider moving forward. I'm not sure as a, as a good. Right? And we have had preliminary discussions with the city about a green peat lot, but that's still, as I said, preliminary.
Yeah, I think that when they go through permit, they will have to meet all the storm order management, uh catch basin or all, I do not know. Whatever, yeah, so so. That that then means that uh you're okay without putting that as. Then, but the condition was the six years uh expiring date from the day of uh approval, yeah. Okay, that's will be good enough for you, right? So uh any other questions? Uh we ready to make a motion? Yes.
I think we're ready for a motion. If I may, Chair, I'll move a motion to approve this application. And the only condition would be that it would be temporary for six years, a period of six years.
From from the day of today?
From the day of.
Yeah, hopeful, yeah, uh six years.
Through you, Madam Chair, it starts, it starts from the final inbounding date.
Oh, I.
So we have standard language that we use.
Oh, yeah, okay, well, we should listen to uh Deputy Secretary, Secretary, Treasurer. Okay, so with that, uh all in favor?
Oh, we didn't get a second.
We don't have a second. Mr. McKay second.
Sorry, Mr. McKay.
He's got two hands, the right one.
Second and uh all in favor.
Thank you.
unanimously approved, thank you. Alright. Twenty-eight, item twenty-eight, believe it or not, is twenty-eight Churchill Avenue. This is to construct a new one-story detached building, which contain the office space in the rear yard of the existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached dwelling. And this new osserial building will not be used for habitable space. And we have received a survey site plan, uh four plans elevations and uh tree inventory and also a couple letter from the agent. And that's all the material we received, yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair, we have the agent here in person to speak. There are no other registered speakers. Please proceed to the podium.
Good evening, Madam Chair and member of the committees.
Yeah, give it to your name and address, we can start with.
Uh yes, my name is Roland Dolphick. I'm an architect of Rob Design, representing the owners at twenty-eight Churchill Avenue.
Uh seem that is you are looking for two variances and and do we need a presentation from from him? Because there's no opposition to the application.
I do have a question.
We just, yeah, we go uh straight to questions. We don't need a presentation.
It's just my quick question. I'm I'm trying to locate the property on on Google Map, but I can't figure out because there's some house structures and.
On the.
Condominiums on the one side. Yeah, I might, unless I'm, I'm, I'm in, this is Saga, not in Toronto.
Oh, we're in Toronto. There's a covering letter um with a map of the block. That might be a a good resource to sort of look at. If if that could be.
It exists. I found it on Google Maps.
That could be rotated. A- actually, during the submission process, um another Churchill was sort of mis- misidentified as the word.
I'm I'm in the wrong spark completely.
Oh, gotcha.
Must have been in Dallas. Thank you.
I do, uh I have, I do have one question. Uh this office space, who will be using it? Is it the uh the owner or is it going to rent it out or?
M- my understanding is that the owner will be renting out the uh building and that the office space will be part of the.
It tandem, it's like a part of the whole, whole, whole thing, okay?
Yeah.
So it's not separately as a rental office space?
No, no, it it's just something, um it's it's a sort of feature for the, for the property.
Alright. Uh uh that's my question, sir. Just want to make sure that it's not like a, create another unit.
Yeah.
Through you, committee?
Yeah, uh we no more questions. We are in committee then. Okay, please.
I'd like to move this. I think this is a very minor application. Well documented, it's a good community, it's a good application, and I think we should approve it. There's no um tree or forestry issues, so I think we'll approve. Recommend, I recommend we approve it.
Okay, it's by a second, all in favor with no conditions, unanimously approved, it's approved. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-nine is two four seven Louden Avenue. This is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear three-story addition and a third-story addition and with a rear rooftop deck and a new front porch. And uh and uh and the, and also the a rear grand four deck with stairs and a side unders- undersized parking pad uh on the existing driveway and also to construct a one uh story new uh osserial building uh which is a shed and storage, is a hobby room and in, in the rear yard. And and the existing garage will be demolished. And we receive copy of survey site plan, floor plan elevations, seven photographs from the, of the property from the agent and email corresponding from transportation engineering. And that's all we have, we speak.
Through you, Madam Chair, we have the agent online to speak. No other registered speakers.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Hello, Madam Chair and committee members. My name is Mike Muir and I'm located in uh Oakville.
Address is overview?
Oakville?
Oakville. The city of Oakville.
Alright, so uh you do not have any opposition. See, uh do we need a presentation or we go straight to questions? Alright, so any questions then?
If the committee would like, I can go through each one or?
Oh, I just, I just wanted to see, I, so yeah, of course, um do you have something you want to address the panel before we move into a discussion? Because you do not have any opposition and it seems that the panel uh does not have any questions either.
Yeah, I I uh, I mean, I would just say that the uh the owners, Connie and Mike, they're simply trying to maintain the existing uh uh use of the property that they already have. Uh the building, the building itself is um, and I don't, I don't think you started the timer, by the way. The that existing, the building is is remaining unchanged. The the rear porch already has a uh full basement underneath. So we're simply extending onto that foundation and going up uh three stories. The front porch, um the second floor is actually an overhang. We're removing that overhang. Uh so we're we're setting the front of the building back a little bit. And then the porch itself is simply being replaced in the same footprint that it, that it exists. It's, we're just making it a concrete por- uh porch to make it more uh, uh you know, a longer-term durability. And uh and and uh, oh, and in terms of the garage, uh we simply wanna move the existing garage to the back of the porch, the back of the building. And coincidentally, uh not really related to this uh hearing, uh they've asked me to construct in such a way that it would be uh able to be converted into a a garden suite in the future, so we're uh, you know, we're we're gonna address that during the construction phase.
Mm hmm. But there will be each one, we are not uh looking at that now. Okay, any questions? Uh okay, uh you have questions?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Um just a quick one with regard to variance number six. Uh it is indicated as uh the softyard, rear yard, soft landscaping is uh to be maintained, which reads, I would read as being an existing circumstance. Uh and you do have some stone walkways, but I take it there's some permeability between the stones. Is that be correct?
Uh i- in the stone walkways, yes, but in the driveway, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that driveway is an existing one as well, so that's fine.
Yeah, and and I, yeah, it is an existing one and um, you know, I would like to keep the same. I wouldn't consider permeability as an option there because I wouldn't wanna uh introduce drainage, a drainage issue with the neighbor.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So I take it then in terms of the ancillary, uh I'm sorry, ancillary shed, it's not gonna be any habitable space in there, right?
No, no. Pardon me?
Sorry, go ahead. I I said not at this point.
Not at this point. Uh the only, the the uh, it it comes down to the funding right now, but they've asked, asked me to consider building it in such a way that uh, you know, we could remove the roof and build up. So the foundation and wall structure will be, I mean, the pad will be insulated so that we could, you know, build, add on to it uh if if they, if they desire to create that not create a, create a, a garden suite in the future.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, alright. Any other questions? Okay. No more questions. Now we are in committee, yes.
I'll add some comments and I propose to move it.
Yeah.
First of all, the documentation is really good. The statistics table is very clear on things like FSI, so it's always appreciated. And your plan that shows where your ancillary building is and is going and things like that, that's really helpful. So thank you for doing that. Makes it much easier for us. Um and I, and so for the committee, I found that, again, also the three D model also helps us show where you're putting the new FSI. And it's very helpful. So it's, so uh with that, um I, I feel that there, I know, I I think there was some transportation correspondence, but other than that, I think we approve the application as submitted. I I recommend we approve.
Yes, I'm. And with no conditions, all in favor of approval, it's approved unanimously. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so uh item number thirty is one oh five Plant Hill uh Avenue. This is to per- permit and maintain the existing interlocking area in the front uh yard, which will be used as a front yard parking pad. We receive a survey and site plan, a revised site. We receive, uh, a survey and site plan, a revised site plan and also a web line, uh, web line site, web line notice, revise zoning waiver and full photograph, cover letter, email corresponding uh, uh, from the agent and presentation material from the agent and the, uh, copy of the building permit. And he, yeah, and, and also we receive com- uh, comment from engine, transportation engineering and a staff report from community planning. Received two letters of support, uh, from one oh seven, one nine, one Glendale Avenue and interest of concern about one hundred Glendale. And we receive oppositions. Uh, there's no address provided is Jay Bundock and also Alicia uh, Stormwatch and no address attached to those two names. Yeah. And we are ready for the agent and, oh, um, we receive in late, uh, material, the staff report. Uh, they, they proposed one condition. Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. We have the agent here in person to speak with no other registered speakers.
Okay. All right, since that you, I, I, I think you have made some revision. Let's go through, go.
Absolutely. Excuse me, sorry, Madam Chair. Absolutely. Jonathan Buzkowski, three zero one Kiwanon Avenue. So we did make a change in consultation with planning. It is to variance number one. So the request now is to be forty-five percent. Or thirty-three point eight nine square meters.
Good, thank you. And, uh, uh, do we need a presentation or we just ask questions? And actually, I, I do not. Okay, there you, although they do not provide any, any addresses, uh, there's a couple of opposition. Uh, can you just briefly?
Absolutely. Um, if we could go to page, I believe it's page two of my presentation material.
Okay.
Um, and, and just while we're doing that, I do want to note, it is existing and there are no vehicles that park on it today. There is no curb cut. The, the existing, uh, pavers there are techno block permeable pavers and that's evident from the picture that was provided. Um, so what I did here is I actually went to the site and I measured from this existing curb cut to the most adjacent curb cut to the south. So what you see on the screen here where we see proposed curb cut, um, with the middle sort of green text and then at the bottom is the existing closest curb cut. That distance is eighteen point nine five meters. So what I then did is I went on the internet and I said, what is the typical average car length? Uh, it gave me four point five meters. So what I then took is four point five meters, starting at that existing curb cut to the south and I measured them in four and a half meter increments. I, I reviewed one of the neighbors' concerns that dealt with the loss of an on-street spot. Uh, in this instance, it's really a zero, zero, one goes on the property or two goes on the property and you lose one on the street. That's essentially it. There's enough room, uh, within the boulevard as well as what is being proposed to provide two cars on the site. So the elimination of one spot does not negate, uh, again, the one spot going on it. Uh, and then, then just lastly, due to the proximity of that existing curb cut to the north. Okay, again, we're just losing one spot with what is being proposed. And I do just want to say one thing. I'm, I'm rambling on a little bit. I know we've been here for a while. Um, this would be permitted to have a garage if it was allowed. The frontage would permit a, a garage if allowed. I just wanted to mention that in terms of the driveway in the front.
Thank you. Yeah, uh, uh, it doesn't mention that transportation seem to be satisfied as long as the parking pads within your property.
It is, it is absolutely.
Yeah. So, uh, any other?
So if you reduce it to twenty point eight two meter, square meters, you pull it back, you get, the city will do the, potentially will approve the curb cut.
They, it's through you, Madam Chair. Yes, Mr. Golding, the city. The understanding is always if you get approval from committee, the city will provide you the curb cut. That's kind of the unwritten. If, if I, we get approval here, they, they will provide the curb cut. And I did just put in a couple of pictures of what's across the street and adjacent, really to show the character of this neighborhood.
Oh, but this is existing already, this curb cut?
The curb cut is not existing. No, no, the, the landscape portion, if, if we were to go, is existing with the techno block pavers. There actually isn't an order to comply issued, even though the building permit has been closed. Um, but he would like the curb cut to provide the parking.
Okay, so you, you, you're increasing the soft landscaping. So you're, that's why your, your revised site plan reflecting the.
Correct, correct.
Okay, yeah.
Letters of opposition, excuse me, that's okay. Letters of opposition were primarily because of the loss of street parking.
Correct, correct, correct.
Thank you.
These lots, these, there's really a variance of lot frontages in this neighborhood, which leads to some uh, on pad parkings. And I also did do an inventory if we wanted to go down. I'm not sure if we need to, but I did an inventory of everybody that had not, had real front pad. A lot of these are narrow lots that have garages that really aren't functionable or have right of ways between the two dwellings in which a dwelling couldn't go down anyway. So in effect, the, the black dots, sorry, the black lots here are true front pad, whereas a lot more would actually have parking in the front yard, just not considered a front pad parking.
All right. All right. Mr. Byatt, I, I thought you're going to ask.
No, 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 no questions.
Interlocking.
It's already permeable, Madam Chair.
Yeah, and the photograph helps with that as well. Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, that's your question. I, I, anyway, um, so no more questions, right? We are in committee now. Uh, we want to take this up with amended, um, amended.
I think to move this application for approval as amended. And, uh, I don't.
Planning, uh, planning has one condition, just to substantiate. Yeah. Pardon?
Side, side plan, yeah.
The side plan, yeah, tied to the side plan S O one, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. McKay's second. All in favor with one condition and amended gender, uh, email. Yeah, it's approved. Thank you unanimously. Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. Uh, we can deal with items thirty-one and thirty-two together?
Oh, because, uh, yeah. So, uh, thirty-one and thirty-two is two forty-nine and two forty-seven, uh, aff- avenue, uh, road, sorry. Uh, is to alter the existing two and a half story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear third story addition and a rear first floor balcony. We receive, uh, a copy of survey site plan, four plan and elevations and nine photographs uh, of the, of, uh, two forty-nine Bedford and we receive eleven photographs for two forty-seven Bedford. And, uh, we receive a, a decision affecting two forty-seven Bedford and also one letter of support for two forty-seven Bedford. It's from two forty-five Bedford Road. Yeah, and that's all the material we receive. We are ready for, is it the same agent for both? Yeah, hi, welcome.
Through you, Madam Chair. We have the agent here in person to speak and we have one registered speaker online.
In opposition or in, um?
We have to confirm. It's blank right now.
We do, we do not know that.
Through you, Madam Chair. Maybe let's unmute this, uh, individual and see if they're speaking in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good evening, Christopher. You've been unmuted. Hi, Christopher, you've been unmuted.
You are satisfied with your message, press one. To listen to your message, press two.
Maybe he's not.
Proceed with the agent.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe, maybe he's starting off to speak now. Yeah. Uh, just, uh, we, we have, we try and then we don't take it as there's no opposition at this point. Yeah. So to give us your name and then.
Good evening. My name is Jason Kiefer. My address is four ninety-six St. James Street, London.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, do we, we do not need a presentation, no?
No.
And then we go straight to the, uh, to questions for both items.
Just a quick question. I, I, I've noticed on, uh, for two forty-nine, uh, one of the side elevations indicates you've got the balcony at the rear. It's actually a really great proposal, two people doing the same thing and makes it so much easier.
Yeah.
Um, I, I noticed the, the, there's privacy screening to one point five meters, which is great. Um, is it on both sides or because one side you'd be sharing presumably? Have they two separate walls there or?
Yeah, that's right. Through you, Madam Chair. Um, we're, uh, we're proposing a privacy screen to the south, um, and to the north. So from, so both for two forty-seven and two forty-nine, um, and, and, uh, a screen between the properties as well. Yeah.
Yeah, terrific. Thank you. I noticed it's already on your plans and you've been thinking ahead of it.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Yes. Okay, so, yeah, uh, uh, any more questions? Okay, yeah, I think so. Energy take us to this point. Let's have, um, yeah.
Sorry. We were in committee.
Do you need to check again to see if?
Do you have anything you want to, uh, address?
Okay.
The panel? No? Okay.
Uh, no.
All right, so, uh,
Are we in committee?
Yes, yes.
This is a good application, minor nature, a very good use of, uh, found space in a house. So, and, and doing it together in a semi-detached building is a great solution. So again, I recommend we approve this application.
Yes, uh, no, it's no conditions, uh, for both, uh, items, right? So, uh, Mr. McKay, you, you second to both items?
Both items, yes.
Okay, and all in favor of approval, unanimously approve for both items, thirty-one and thirty-two. Thank you for coming. Yes.
Thank you. Our state of hand.
Okay, so, uh, now we are on item number thirty-three. And, uh, it's, uh, four twenty-one Grace Street. This is to alter the existing two-story, uh, two and a half stories semi-detached by constructing a rear second story addition and a rear box bay window. As, uh, and the first floor addition with a rear partially covered rooftop deck and a green roof uh, on second floor and a new couple of front porch with stair. The enclosed portion of the existing front porch will be demolished and the front, uh, basement window well and the rear entrance, uh, canopy. We receive a survey site plan for plan elevation, revise site plan for plan elevations and also two photographs and a couple of letter from the agent. We receive a report from, uh, urban forestry and also advisory report from, uh, from tree protection. And we also have, uh, received support from four nineteen Montrose Ave- Avenue and three six three, uh, Grace Avenue. We receive a that concern from three eighty-nine Way Street. And that's all the material we are, we have received and, and the late, uh, uh, material we have received urban forestry, uh, um, uh, comment. Uh, 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 thank, thank you, yeah.
There's no recommendation.
We're ready for the agent.
Good evening. You've been unmuted, Agent Forthfop.
Yeah, this is Deborah Mesher of one nine eight Melita Avenue. I'm the designer and agent for this application.
Um, I, I, we need a presentation from them. You, you, you do not have any, you, you have a letter of concern, but I do not have anyone else want to speak to this item. So, okay, uh, good, uh, since you have a letter of concern, can you, have you read the, uh, letter? And then can you briefly address that concern?
Uh, yes, yes, I have read it. Yeah, it's, it's concerning the retaining wall. The, the neighbor to the south has about four feet to grade. They have access to kind of parking from Gray Street. As you know, Gray Street has, has a very steep slope there on Bigford Park, like we're raised up quite high. So the retaining wall is about four feet in places. And, um, and they've just, they're concerned that, you know, if it needs remediation, could we replace it and fix it as part of the construction? Uh, and so yes, we're amenable to that for sure.
Yes, uh, actually I do have one question for you. I think that it's probably just a calculation error, but then it's, uh, uh, it's variance number five, um, you would, uh, require fun yard, uh, landscaping. And the fifty percent, your fifty percent is the fif- uh, fifteen point two two square meter. You provide in thirty-eight point nine six. This square footage should not be five point nine. What I have done, you, you agree to is actually eleven point eight square meters. Yeah, so because it doesn't, uh, uh, it is the, the five point nine is actually a percentage of the, uh, required landscaping is not the landscaping area.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Yeah, I do agree.
That's why there's, I mean, there's two parts of that, that same variance. And this was, um, yeah, so there, there was a, you know, discussion about is it, you know, fifty percent of seventy-five percent of the front wall area that's not covered by the porch? Or is it part of, is it? So it's like there's two of them. So, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, I mean, the percentage is correct and at least that we are not increasing it, but it's only a calculation, I think. So we, we should be eleven point eight square meters, I think.
Okay.
Thirty-eight, uh, point nine six percent representing eleven point eight square meter. Okay?
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
Just one if I may, Chair.
Yeah, please.
Um, the third floor deck that you have on the south side, um, it looks like you're going to have overlook issues with the neighbors. So I wonder if we could, uh, request that there be a privacy screen of one point five meters along that side. It's just the south side, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, so actually, yeah, yeah, thank you for going to the third floor plan there. Yeah, the, I mean, the, the deck itself is, is set back quite, quite far. So that's where that green roof is below it. So there, because we're set back that whole distance, there actually isn't an overlook from that deck, like from that side going to the south. Um, so that isn't an issue. That's why I designed it this way. Uh, however, I mean, i- if, if you, if you want the privacy screen there, we can do that. It just means that they won't be able to enjoy the, the look of the green roof.
Actually, I'm looking at your, uh, proposed site plan and you're right because the house to the south, no, to the north of you is, um, yeah, there'll be no overlook of the backyard. That's great. No, I think that'll work perfectly. Thank you.
Yeah. For, uh, for, uh, okay, please, yeah.
Just getting to the forestry issue for the moment, uh, it talks about a, a city-owned tree, city, sorry, city-owned silver maple, uh, tree. So would you have any problem if we added a urban forestry condition number one?
Yeah, yeah, not at all. Yeah, I saw that with regards to the window well excavation and, you know, it being in the tree protection zone. So absolutely to get a, a tree injury permit for that. Yeah, that's no problem.
I just want to, uh, uh, ask again that the privacy screen, uh, do you, uh, uh, do you have a women, whether we're going to put privacy?
No, because the, 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 the house actually is, the extension is in line with the neighbor and the, and the deck is actually set back from that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So there's no need. Okay, thank you.
You'd have to literally lean over to.
Yeah. I, I have one question. You said that, um, uh, variance number one, you're seeking one point two four. Uh, is, um, what is the existing G F S I?
One.
No, that, that's required.
Existing is point nine eight because of the grade. That's how, you know.
Oh, so. Is counted, yeah, that in the cover letter, yeah, the basement is counted because of, because of that steep slope that we're on and that the that's why the first floor variance is that the way that it is because we're just higher at, from grade there. So the basement is triggered in that area. So, yeah, so we're really asking for, you know, uh, uh, an augmentation from point nine eight to one point two four, not from point six to one point two four.
I see. Okay, one, this is one. All right, thank you. Uh, any other questions? Okay, uh, we do not have any more questions. Uh, now we're in committee.
I, I'll move this chair. Um, fairly straightforward application, quite, uh, well put together. Uh, I'd like to move a motion to approve. Um, there's only one condition, that's forestry one.
Yeah, uh, yes. Uh, okay. All right, so.
Sorry, through you, Madam Chair. I just checked the zoning review.
Yes.
No condition.
No, no, like the zoning review about, um, variance number five. And they are quoting thirty-eight point nine six percent at five point nine three square meters. I'm, I'm just concerned that if we make the change and they can't clear it with zoning, is that going to cause issues? is that going to cause issues?
That's that, that's, that's why I'm, I'm asking that question, whether we just leave it at this, because often this kind, this mistake pops up. I always find that they they base on different number. And it's not the first time I seen a calculation done wrong. As long as the percentage, three thirty eight on nine six, maybe we should leave it as it is. Because it's, but then five point nine versus is half of what?
No, I know. I'm just, what I'm saying is, is that, you know, a zoning review has been completed. The applicant submitted the zoning review. That's what we based our notice on. And I'm just, I just don't want them to have any issues at the building permit stage.
Yeah, it's a small.
I mean, realistically, you know, if there was an error, it's it's more than, so there won't be any issues. But maybe we just leave it as is. Based on what the zoning examiner has calculated it as.
Exactly. They still have to provide thirty eight point six percent.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I I agree with you. So just leave it as it is, just. It's not the first time we picked mistakes on the calculation. Okay. I forgot where we're at.
Moving a motion perhaps.
Oh, yes, Mr. Byatt, you have a motion.
A motion to approve with forestry one condition.
Yes, and Ms. McKay second?
Yes, I will.
Okay, second. The forestry condition one, all in favor? Yes, approve unanimously. Thank you. And the next item is thirty four, seven thirty four Adelaide Street. And this is to construct a new one-story ossier building, which contain yoga studio in the rear yard of the existing two-story townhouse. This new ossier building will not be used for habitable space. The existing rear storage set will be demolished. We also receive a plan of survey site plan for plan elevation, four photographs, and also an obvious report from the agent. We receive staff communication from Urban Forestry and also one letter in support from seven thirty two Adelaide Street West. And this, we also receive in late material, support from seven thirty two Adelaide Street too. Thank you. We are ready for the agent.
Good evening.
Good evening, Agent. You've been unmuted.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee. My name is Tradi Orani from thirty three thirty five Young Street from Orani Architecture, representing the client.
I don't know whether we need a presentation. You do not have opposition. But we do have some question. I have a question for you. Which is the urban forestry request deferral? What what is it about?
So unfortunately, the, we we have already submitted an application for the tree injury, which is the silver maple tree of the neighboring property. But the application was submitted late. As a result, I believe at the time that Urban Forestry made the comment, the permit was not granted or the application went in on the same day. However, this is a very small structure, does not have foundation walls. It would be a simple slab on grade with, at the most, sonotube. So the injury would be very minimal. And the application with Urban Forestry is already in hand with forestry. So we would be happy to take their recommendation and having, if you choose to approve the application, having the approval conditional upon approval of Urban Forestry.
Oh, yes, but since they haven't reviewed it, you still, I mean, despite of putting that condition, you still have to get approval from them through the application process.
Of course.
Yeah, so because there's no conditions that they recommend, they only want to have a deferral.
No, they've recommended condition number two.
Oh, number two, it's not be defer, you mean?
It's in the second report.
Oh, second report, okay, so then then, okay, thank you for, yeah, bringing that up. I I missed that. Foresty condition two, okay.
If we approve it, it still has, it's, forestry still isn't obligated to approve. So, yeah, so. Forestry has the last word here.
Yeah, exactly, okay. Any other questions? No? Okay, we are, we are ready to discuss this case. You have anything else you want to address us? The panel before we move into a decision? No, okay, so we are in committee now.
All right, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, please.
I think the the proposed ten by ten building is a very, is a minor variance, is a minor increase over the the five percent lot area target size. I I propose that we, I recommend we approve this application with forestry condition four, correct?
Because four is a deferral request.
Yeah, sorry.
I'll second that change.
Miss Byatt, second, the forestry condition two, all in favor? All in favor, approve unanimously, thank you. So the last item is thirty five Crawford, sixty nine Crawford Street. This is to construct a new one-story ossier building. This is the detached garage updating the lane and in the rear yard of the lot containing the existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached dwelling. The existing detached garage will be demolished. We receive a survey site plan for plan elevation, three through the webs, and also planning letter from from the agent. We receive nine signature petition in support on Crawford Street and also from Massey Street. We receive another support from seventy one Crawford Street. And that's all we have received. We are ready for the agent.
Good evening, Agent. You've been unmuted.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name is Mary Feeley, Senior Planner at STL Planning and Design, located at fifteen forty seven Blurer Street West in Toronto. And I'm acting as an agent for the owners.
Thank you. You do not have any opposition, and I think that is very straightforward application. I see we need with presentation. Or do you have questions? Okay, we do not need a presentation or we have no, or questions for you. And you have anything you want to address the panel before we move into a decision?
No, not at this time, but I remain available for any questions that you may have, Madam Chair, or members of the committee.
Okay, thank you very much. So we are in committee.
I thank you, Chair. Again, this is a very straightforward application with three variances, none of which are excessive in any way. And there are no other conditions attached to this particular application. So I'd like to move approval with no conditions.
Okay, Mr. McKay, second. All in favor with no conditions? It's approved unanimously. Thank you. It's approved. And that's the end of today's hearing. It's seven oh nine meeting adjourned.
Thank you. Members, please turn off your videos.